Good morning.
That's okay.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you so much for being here. And our meeting managers today are Mrs. Hines and Ms. Palchek. So I'm going to hand over the meeting immediately to them since it's their meeting.
Well, thank you. We have quite the day. So I think we're going to let Dr. Brabrand kick us off with some words. And then we will ask for people to listen to the whole presentation, and we'll take some questions at the end.
Well, thank you all. Good morning. Happy Monday. It's great to see so many of you here. And we appreciate getting a chance to kick it off by talking about the strategic plan. This has been really a year-long work in progress. One of the things we talked about this past year was working to prioritize the strategic plan, that it was an outstanding plan that had been developed by this board with the prior superintendent and staff. But how we could begin to align that plan more effectively with our budget and also get the plan in chunks so that we could have better fidelity of implementation across our system. So we did some prioritization activities with you. We've worked on reformatting. Many of you know, for three years, our engagement survey with employees have said they are overwhelmed. We had over 30 things as desired outcomes in the strategic plan to do all at once. And this plan now has less than 10 to focus on over the next two years. This plan also is really worked based on feedback with you all and so many organizations and parents. The goal of this plan is to make sure everyone can touch, feel, really understand the plan, particularly at the ground level where it needs to be executed. So we've worked to simplify language. We've revised metrics. We've provided performance targets to be measured on. We have aspirational goals. And we really see a five-year period for these aspirational goals of where we want to go. But we also have all of the data broken down by different subgroups so that you can have the transparency that you want. Our folks have worked very hard, and our leadership team has. And we're excited to show our work with you and get your feedback so that we can move forward and re-invite and re-communicate the plan to all of our stakeholders this year as we kick off the leadership conference next month. So without further ado, Marty Smith has been our COO, but also Strategic Plan Extraordinaire Coordinator. He's led us through leadership team meetings the entire year, getting us to a better place. And I look forward to him and his team, the Goal Champions presentations this morning, and answering your questions.
Okay, great. Thank you, Dr. Brabrand, and good morning, everyone. It's good that we are here today. I'd like to welcome Dr. Frances Ivy to the table as her first work session as deputy. It's good to have you here at the table, Frances. And as you can see, I have my Goal Champions here at the table. We're going to go through the presentation today and then give you an opportunity to ask questions at the end of the presentation. But before I get into the presentation, I do just need to thank you all for the input that we've received over these past months about the strategic plan. We shared some information with the board around the focus groups that we developed and engaged with the community, our variety of stakeholders, with our associations, received a lot of good input with the plan and are able to share our final product with you today. Just to make sure that this works here, to just give you an outline of today's presentation, we're going to give you some information, update you on the staff progress since March, our last time that we were here talking about the plan. We're going to review the plan with you. And one thing that we heard loudly and clearly from our stakeholders and primarily from you, the board, is that we needed to simplify our focus. If you remember, we had language focused around desired outcomes, actions, metrics, and targets. And so we really attempted to simplify that. So as we go through the presentation today, you'll see that we're going to review the what we want to accomplish. And that's tied to our original desired outcomes. We're going to share how we're going to get there. And that's tied to what we formally refer to as actions. And we're going to explain what success looks like at the end of the day for Fairfax County, for our students, staff, and families. And those are really the metrics and the targets that we've established for the plan. And we're going to also share with you, we've provided you benchmark information, some data, as well as targets that we're looking for for the coming school year. We're going to describe a new budget process where we've talked about aligning the budget to the strategic plan. And then hopefully, by the end of the day, we'll have a finalized plan that you'll be able to vote on at our final school board meeting. And so when you look at some progress that we've had since March, we've refined these actions to reflect what is needed to really get us to these desired outcomes that we established, that you established as a board. We went from many, many desired outcomes down to eight. We had some very good work sessions around that process. If you remember that last work session that we had, lots of great input from board members. And we really felt like that we got the language that was a very good refinement of our original strategic plan. We've created documents that depict those eight focus areas. And we've posted those documents for your review today. And we've also planned how we're going to align our budget to the plan itself. We got there through a variety of leadership team retreats and meetings, many hours of input from our staff and the departments, assistant superintendents, working very closely with their directors and coordinators. Again, I talked about the focus groups. We've had two rounds of two-by-twos with you as individual board members with lots of good input. And as Dr. Brabrand said, that we're looking at this as an aspirational plan. So the targets that you'll see in the documents that we focus on today, that one-pager, those are our aspirational goals, where we want to ensure that all of our students are performing at the same rates as our highest-performing student groups. In the past, we've talked about subgroups of students. And the new language that we like to focus on is simply student groups and groups of students. And so this is the next step for us, is just to give you the document itself. You can see behind me that the feedback from the board is that we really needed to focus our plan on Portrait of a Graduate. You'll see that Portrait of a Graduate is highlighted very well within the one-page document that we want to use as a way to inform all of our stakeholders around the plan. When Dr. Brabrand first arrived, and he was going out and meeting with groups and talking about the plan, people knew that we may have a plan, but they really weren't sure what was in it. It was very overwhelming. We feel that this document will be a great first step at bringing all of our stakeholders on board. And you can see that it builds on resource stewardship there to the left. If we are able to be good stewards of those resources, we will then be able to hire premier workforce, which will then create a caring culture that is then focused on student success. And as Portrait of a Graduate being that primary umbrella for us to ensure that our students are as successful as possible. So we talk about the what. Those, again, were the desired outcomes, but the what? What do we want to accomplish as a system? These are the eight desired outcomes that you, the board, developed that we were able to distill and refine from the original plan. You can see there, and we won't go through them here because I'll go through them individually in just a few moments. And I do want to draw your attention to one of the whats that we... Oh, there we go. I do want to draw your attention to one of the whats around caring culture. We had input from school board members on language in terms of focusing on students making healthy life choices and also staff making healthy life choices. So one change that we've made, one area that we've amended, we have in the second bullet that FCPS will use best practices. Before, it was that students will make healthy life choices. We've changed it to say that FCPS will use best practices to enable students, and now staff, to make healthy life choices. So that's one addition that we've made, that, again, we got input from board members and tried to place as much input that we received in that two-by-two process in our plan. So hopefully, each of you around the table will be able to see that, ah, they listened and they added some of my suggestions into the plan. Again, I talked about the design framework. The what were related to the old desired outcomes. The how is related to the actions. That's how we're going to get there. And explaining what success looks like is really related to our metrics and performance targets. And you'll note that as I get into the presentation, we've also added some sample or example action plans as to some of the actions that we may undertake as a staff, as a system, to get to these desired outcomes, to get to the what. And while this is not an exhaustive list, this was merely to provide an example to the board of ways that we might get there. We will, as staff, as a next step, be developing these action plans to actually put the meat on the bone, so to speak, so that we can actually get to the outcomes that the board outlined for us. So that first what, student success, Portrait of a Graduate attributes. It said, "All students, all pre-K-12 students will continuously progress in their development of Portrait of a Graduate and attributes." And so you can see that how there is related to ensuring that students have opportunities to apply these skills in real-world environments and ensuring that our teachers are using the learning model, a model that we've established that we feel is the best way for our students to reach these attributes. You can see the aspirational success target there is that at least 90% of our students will receive a passing grade on an independent end-of-year research project. And we call those capstone projects. You can see that these items are linked here in this PowerPoint presentation. And as we create the electronic website, or the site where our plan will be housed, there will be links from that site to these different resources so that members of our community, our stakeholders, can understand what Portrait of a Graduate is, what the learning model is, what are capstone projects, et cetera. And then you can see an example of some of the types of actions that we will undertake to get us there. Next under student success is the elimination of gaps. And we can see that you very clearly said that we will eliminate those gaps in the opportunity, access, and achievement for students. I've been listening to the different citizens participate in the board meetings and share their thoughts on the plan. And this is an area where when we look at all of our student groups, we're looking at student groups across the board, that we're going to ensure that we are going to close those gaps of opportunity, access, and achievements for students. And we really want to focus on applying the aspects and the attributes of the closing the achievement framework with much more fidelity within the system. And you can see there that we can, we will be successful when we see participation rates in a variety of advanced academic opportunities for students, as well as honors, advanced placement, international baccalaureate. And algebra will be the same and similar across student groups. You'll also see that 90% of our students in all student groups will pass their reading and math SOLs at both, or at all three levels. And that they'll pass a college-level exam or an industry certification before graduating. There is a measure on on-time graduation, and then also having a plan for college or career. And that's another piece that we heard loudly and clearly from our stakeholders and from the board, that we want to focus on career as well as college. You'll also see that we have a measure on ensuring that our students have access to a computer or a tablet, and that at least 90% of our English language learners will be proficient in English within five years, with then sample action plans that show how we're going to actually get to this desired outcome. And then lastly, for student success, it's an area focused on early education, where all future FCPS students will have access to high-quality early education programs. We had lots of questions from the board around what the Fairfax County Equitable School Readiness Plan was. And so we've linked that. And so it's linked here on the PowerPoint, and will be linked as we put the plan online. But really, it's about enhancing those partnerships with our families and with the county government to ensure that our young students are ready for kindergarten. And we tried to create as plain language as possible so that all of our stakeholders would really understand what we were saying without, or throughout the entire plan, but specifically when we talked about what we were going to do for our students in getting them prepared for kindergarten. And where, again, at least 90% of those students in all student groups will enter kindergarten with foundational skills for math and reading. And then giving you a sample of those action plans of activities that we would be engaged in to ensure that those students are ready for kindergarten. For caring culture, we have a focus on ensuring that our employees demonstrate cultural responsiveness when supporting families, students, and other staff members. And this was really about increasing our employees' knowledge and skills in culturally responsive practices. And we would show success in these areas. When we see those staff referrals for disruptive behaviors would be similar across all student groups. And there have been some questions around using that metric of disruptive behaviors. But we feel that when staff are more culturally responsive, that they would have a better understanding of students and the individual, their individual qualities that they bring to the classroom. And we would see fewer disruptive behavior referrals from teachers with regard to those individual differences. Also noting that 90% of students will feel respected and included at school. That was very direct input from board members. Wanted to make sure that we focus on that student inclusion well. It's one thing to feel respected. It's another to feel like you are part of a larger group. And then wanting to also then focus on 90% of our staff members feeling respected at work. And then also ensuring that all of our staff members complete our culturally responsiveness, cultural responsiveness training. And you can see then some of the activities that we would engage in to actually accomplish that desired outcome. Second area, under healthy life choices, I shared with you some of the changes that we suggest for healthy life choices, where we focus on best practices and have included staff as well as students. And really, the way that we do that is we increase our school and department awareness and use of those practices that support positive individual wellness. We have a myriad resources in Fairfax County to support student and staff wellness. It's really ensuring that we're aware of those resources and then are applying those resources on a regular basis. And you can see some of those areas for success that we feel are important with regard to fewer than 2% of students will have disruptive behavior referrals. We'll see that 90% of our students are not using drugs and alcohol. 90% of our students will report positive relationships with peers and adults. They'll also report healthy social-emotional skills and will report healthy lifestyle behaviors. That was more feedback from the board around those basic behaviors of sleep, nutrition, and exercise, and wanted to ensure that we have some type of measure for student success in those areas. We'll also see that schools will have low rates of students with frequent absences. And that for our staff, that our employees will have the opportunity to take advantage of the wide array of wellness resources that we provide them in Fairfax County. And again, you can see on the next slide a few of those example activities that would get us to that desired outcome. Premier workforce, we focus on FCPS offering market-competitive compensation packages. And that's really the how to do that, is to increase those salaries, the competitiveness of the salaries for all employees. We are well on the way to doing that. It's one of those things that we have to monitor on a regular basis to ensure that we're continually competitive within the market. And we would know success in that area when all pay scales are within 95% to 105% of the market. And you can see there, a lot of the activities that we're currently engaged in around conducting the compensation study and really doing the ongoing work to ensure that our scales remain competitive and then providing those additional incentives for hard-to-fill and critical positions. The next slide is showing that we're going to recruit, hire, and retain exceptional employees in Fairfax County. And the how is strengthening our division-wide use of fair and consistent practices to recruit, hire, and retain a diverse workforce. We're already engaged in that work as a system. And we'll see success in those areas when all of our open teaching positions will have at least four qualified applicants. That's really that focus on those unique applicants for positions. And when we had a previous version of the plan and we talked about unique applicants, one of our stakeholder groups said, "Are you looking for applicants that have unique personalities? What are you looking for with 'unique'?" And so we had to think about plain language once again. And so that's ensuring that we have, those open teaching positions would have at least four qualified candidates. Again, noting that at least 75% of all teaching positions will be filled by July 1st. And we've already reached that particular measure and target. So we're very happy about that at this time of year. That the diversity of our teacher applicants will match the diversity of Virginia teaching graduates. And that's really the notion of our pool. When we think about the graduates who are coming from us from state colleges and universities, we'd want to ensure that our diversity in our hiring pool matches those students who are coming out of those prep programs. And then also that the diversity of our hired applicants would match the diversity of those in the pool. We've had several conversations as a board and leadership team around what that would look like. When you have a particular number or percentage of applicants in your pool, that the applicants that you hire would match that percentage in the pool. We also focused on schools having less than or fewer than 10% of teachers transfer to other schools within the school system. We know that teachers transfer for a variety of reasons. And wanting to ensure that we at least can get a handle on and get some baseline data on the percentage of teachers who are transferring, figure out the reasons why, and then work with our staffs to ensure that we're retaining those teachers within their buildings. And then looking at overall employee retention rates being at least 90%. And you can then see some of the action plans that would get us to that particular desired outcome. And lastly, we have resource stewardship. It's an area that I have been working very closely with since I've taken the role of COO on and working to bring our new assistant superintendent up to speed in Fairfax. But really, that the what is fiscal budgeting allocation will maximize our effectiveness and efficiency in Fairfax County. We take very seriously that we are stewards of the public's trust and we are stewards of the public's investment in Fairfax County schools and their students. And so it's really important for us to enhance those processes for allocating resource, to consider strategic initiatives, equity, and effectiveness in the process. Now, one of those areas that we would measure success would be comparing ourselves to our WABE comparators so that we would be within $1,000 of the average cost per pupil within the DC metro region. We also, based on feedback from the board, wanted to focus on our capital improvement plan. And so we have an area or a metric around all schools having adequate classroom space for students, eliminating the need for trailers. And then one new metric that we've added based on input from school board members is that if we're going to focus on effectiveness, we really need to think about how much of our plan we're actually moving through an effectiveness tool. So when we think about the strategic decision-making process, we would start to use the strategic decision-making process as we make fiscal decisions about the items that we have in the strategic plan. And we'll talk a little bit about that process in just a bit. But you can see there are some of the action plans that focus on helping us get to the what of fiscal budgeting. You can see here that we've attached the, just a one-pager to show the baseline data that we've used to establish our targets for the coming school year. It's also a separate attachment within your board packet today. And this is an important document that we will use to share with our stakeholders, share with our teachers, share with our community, not only what we expect to do aspirationally, but then how we'll break this work out for the next year. And I know that as we've had two-by-twos, board members have had questions around some of these targets. And so we have our champions at the table today to help answer some of those questions around the targets. The new piece, and it's really not so new because we've shared the strategic decision-making process with the board before, is that as we align the strategic plan to the budget, that we think about our budget in two different categories and two different buckets. And I'm just going to jump ahead to the next slide to show you those buckets first. We would have the strategic plan bucket as one of those areas that we would categorize the funds and expenditures within the budget. And then we have everything else, which would be operational. And as we are thinking about the strategic plan and how we're implementing the projects, the, we call them PSPIs, project services, programs, and initiatives within the plan, we would use that strategic plan bucket and run those projects through the decision-making process. We would also, and aspirationally, want to get to using this SDMC decision-making cycle with all of our budget expenditures, which also gets into the operational lens. But to start with, as we think about implementing any new process, start with the strategic plan first and then provide input to the board on our effectiveness during our goal reports. So then to go back to what that plan looks like, we're currently in the plan of the Plan Do Study Act model. And that plan piece is prioritizing the work, determining the budget allocation, and developing those specific measurable outcomes. The next piece is the do, where we actually get to spend the dollars. And the hard work comes into play, harder work comes into play when we're actually examining those outcomes and looking at those outcomes through a return on investment lens. So new information that we just posted this morning based on some input that we had from our meeting managers was the return on investment framework that we've developed and shared with the board during previous presentations. And so you'll see that we've added that return on investment framework so that you could see how we might apply return on investment as we get into that study aspect of the cycle. And then the act is whether or not, determining whether or not we got the return on investment that we were looking for and that we would continue doing that work, or we then would stop doing that work and reprioritize other aspects of the plan or other aspects of our operational work. So here we have, on the last slide, we have the back of the one-pager. And really, it's now up to us as a team, and I see us as a team of school board and leadership team, to then finalize the plan so that we can start the work of developing the action plan so that we can actually get to the what that you directed us to do. And I see Elizabeth has just come in here. And while we've included several of your suggestions into the plan, I know that this whole notion of simplifying and talking about the what, the how, and how we're going to show success instead of this convoluted language of desired outcomes. And that was input that we got from several stakeholders. But I see Elizabeth, she was kind of smiling at me as she saw the what, the how, and the success. So we hope that the work that we've done this year as a team will actually get us to those outcomes that we feel are most important for our students so that our students can be as successful as they possibly can be. So that is our presentation. And we are now ready for any questions.
Good. Well, thank you so much, Mr. Smith, Dr. Brabrand, and the whole team. I know you've worked all year on improving our plan and meeting with us, two-by-twos, and meeting with stakeholders. And I agree, I think this is, I love the new language. Always, everything's a work in progress. But I think finally, the hope is that we can all get on board and that our teachers and kids will be talking about this, and not just us.
Yes, we want them all talking about it. We want our community talking about it. We want everybody talking about the plan.
Good. Well, I appreciate it. So we will, and the goal for today, just to review with our board members, is, you know, anything that might help us as we, keeping in mind we're a week and a half from the final vote. So if you want to maybe just repeat for us specifically what you're looking for today.
Specifically today, this is our best thinking that we're presenting to you. We know that as we've had two-by-twos, we've had input and that we've tried to put all that input into the plan or as much as we possibly could. If there are things that you would like to see in the plan, if there are tweaks that you'd like to make, we'd like to have some direction at the end of our work session today so that we can go out and make some of those changes so that we can post that information and have it available to you so that you can vote at our final meeting in July.
Okay, thank you. And reminding our board members here, we're looking really at planning for the next couple of years, most specifically.
Yeah, and if you remember, this is part of a larger plan. The original plan still had several desired outcomes that we hadn't incorporated because we wanted to look at this in smaller chunks. And so these were the higher priority items that the board felt were the most important that we should address within this next two-year period.
Thank you. So just to let board members know, so far, we have three signed up to speak. We will begin with Ms. Kies-Gamara. Then we have Ms. Corbett Sanders, Ms. Schultz, and Ms. Evans. And Ms. Strauss, and then, thank you. Okay.
Okay, I didn't realize I was first. Thank you, guys. I think this is good work. I appreciate the opportunity to be able to provide some feedback. I think in my session, my two...
Two-by-two?
Two-by-two, I didn't know. Two-by-two, I didn't know. Reminded me of Noah's Ark, I saw that. I think one of the things I brought up there is that we really, I think we need to look at how, and I'm on page six, how we define success. I think traditionally, we've had a great emphasis on college-bound students, you know, the folks who are doing the advanced academics, the folks who want to go to the top schools in the nation, but not all schools, not all children fit that particular mold. I would really like to see a little bit more flushing out of what success looks like and really a legitimization for those that don't fit that mold, that there are other alternatives, right? What, you know, what it looks like to go into the tech schools and to pursue some other things that they may be interested in, and really being able to identify those types of things as early as possible. Because I do believe that the mental health component, the level of stress that children are experiencing, to some extent, is because they may be feeling as though they have to fit into a particular mold, and it's just not going to happen. That goes to my second point, which is, I'm not seeing, and it may be in some of the plans that you had underlined, you know, how you were going to do your actual lessons, but I wasn't seeing anything clearly as to how we were going to serve our particular populations, especially special education. They have been most behind in a lot of these groups in terms of achievement. I'd like to see a lot more flushing out of what that would be, and I will be bringing an amendment to try to address that. On page eight, you had success, how do we, was another definition of success, and we listed SOL pass rates. I'm struggling with, and I understand that the state is involved in this definition, but I'm not sure that the SOLs is, we should be so reliant on that as defining our success. Certainly, we want our kids to meet a minimum, but these standardized tests, I think, are faulty for a number of reasons, and we worked, I believe, to try to minimize that. But I'd like to hear some ideas on how we can make sure that our kids, again, this is not another mental health stressor that we are building into our strategic plan. With respect to readiness for kindergarten, I'd love to hear what that plan is in terms of working with the county to make sure we get everybody in there. On page 11, we say staff referrals for disruptive behavior, and there seems to be a large emphasis on cultural responsiveness. I do believe that that is a large part of it. I'd like to know how that's different from what we've been doing in the past. And I also think that there should be an additional component. I think that we need to be focusing, or we need to, it could be that I'm not aware, but how are we making sure that our staff members understand how to de-escalate situations, how to handle discipline, how to not overrespond to normal, childlike behavior? Is that a part of the cultural responsiveness? I'm not sure, but I have been feeling for some time that that is something that we need to make sure that we're doing and that our staff members, you know, because I think in one school, it may vary from school to school. This may be some part of our training with respect to the particular regions as to how we're handling something. Something that is considered childlike behavior in one school could be considered so disrespectful that it warrants discipline in another school. How are we monitoring that to make sure that we have the level of fidelity and assurance of fairness for all of our students across FCPS? That is a large concern for me. Use of fair hiring practices, you mentioned on page 15, and I understand that we're under a new, we've implemented a new program just since I've been on the board, and I'm wondering when we will get some report on how we're doing and if we need to tweak that at all. So I'm looking forward to that.
And we'll be bringing that in the fall.
Okay. And let me just make sure. I think that pretty much covers my questions.
And Ms. Kies-Gamara, a lot of the things that you focused on are items that we would be focusing on in our action plans. And what I failed to share with the board is that as we come with our quarterly goal reports to the board, you would be receiving updates on the action plans that we're implementing so that we can get to these particular outcomes. And so that will be part of the report itself. And based on other input, we're going to make sure that we have those action plans on our website so that when people click on an area to see what we're doing, they can easily see what we're implementing within our schools, as departments, and as school-based leaders to get to our particular outcomes.
So I want to clarify, or at least try to get a clarification from you. With respect to reducing the number of disruptive behavior reports, the emphasis I saw there was on cultural responsiveness. Does that include addressing how we respond to discipline, making sure that we're not over, you know, we're not seeing in one school behavior and categorizing it in one way and in another school as something else? I really, is that distinction made in that particular approach? And if not, how do we get to that?
So I'm going to ask Ms. Johnson, I know that these are one of the areas that she's worked on, and I know it would be really a collaboration between DSS and also looking at Dr. Duran, the work that we're doing with cultural responsiveness, to figure out the approach once we start to look at the data. But I'll let Ms. Johnson.
So we're looking at expanding and informing schools about resources for multi-tiered systems of support. We talked a little bit about that in our two-by-twos. We're also doing a deeper dive. When we say disruptive behavior, that includes about nine different, we call them the D's in our discipline coding for our student information system. So we are doing a deeper dive by individual school to see who needs additional support and where we need to go.
One piece I would just add is part of the cultural proficiency training, which, again, is an ongoing piece of work. We're really at the beginning stages of that work, and Dr. Duran might want to add in on this one as well. While we're not really, at this point, talking about specific strategies, as you mentioned, for de-escalating behavior, a lot of what we're talking about is making sure that we're recognizing differences, obviously, and honoring differences in all of our classrooms, and creating a culture where everyone feels included and heard in the classroom. So that's where we're kind of starting with this work. And as we go deeper in the work, what we're talking about is unconscious bias and how that might manifest itself in some of the decisions that we make. So we're starting to really look at those larger themes and topics, and then in the additional work that Ms. Johnson talked about with multi-tiered systems of support and ongoing training around classroom management for staff, that's where those two things, I think, really kind of come together.
The only other thing I would add as part of the training is that it is an effort and an emphasis on really unpacking the data on a disaggregated level, and that goes all the way up to the district, as I've talked in our two-by-twos about the equity profile that's coming. But how do we then help schools understand their own data and how do teachers and grade-level teams and professional learning communities look at their data from that lens? So it doesn't specifically speak to the strategies. Ms. Johnson talked about how that will be emphasized, but then that's in concert with the cultural responsive training about, now that we're emphasizing this different approach and these new strategies, how do you look at your data differently to understand what impacts are happening for your students?
So if I'm understanding you correctly, you're, we're at the beginning of really examining this, and I guess what I'm emphasizing is that I would like some assurances, which I'm sure we're all on the same page, that we get to the point where we are addressing how these different issues are being handled, because the impact can be vast, as we've seen in the baseline numbers, which I find disturbing. So I think that we have to find ways to get there quickly.
Mr. Smith, could you let us know, when do you expect the action plans to be posted? And I know it doesn't 100% address, but I know that's the staff side, and so we can look at that.
So we are, we are just starting that work, so we, you saw some of the examples, those are existing actions that we're engaged in, but we know that there's much more work. And so as we look as a team, we know that this work will drive what we do this coming school year, and so we're hoping to get that developed as quickly as possible. I can't promise anything because we really may be reporting out to the board in that goal report process first, and then merely updating after we do the goal report. But I can't really promise when we would get that information now. I don't want to have my colleagues around the table, you know, look at me askance.
I think, Dolly, the honest answer is, we haven't decided that as a team. Let me take that back and go, hey, let's build a timeline in for the action.
We're still working on that.
Even if it's...
Yeah. And Karen, I wanted to say, there are best practices to de-escalate. We need to get them out quicker to the staff. We've been doing cultural responsive training. It's been a wider lens. It has. It's been this broader lens. I think you're asking for, what are some quick and dirty things we can tell the classroom teacher on day one? Do this, don't do that. And the truth is, the classroom management of our teachers, especially newer teachers, our teacher prep programs are not preparing teachers for the situations that they are encountering today in the classroom. They're not. So we've got to start to build it in. Traditionally, we've relied on the teacher prep program. We've done a nice new beginnings, which we've redesigned with a classroom management component in it for our newest teachers. But I think we're going to have to have more plain-spoken language about how folks can de-escalate, not just teachers, but administrators, school staff. We've kind of been broader, but people need the detail to actually help them. Give me the roadmap when a kid starts to act out in class.
I do want to make sure, if you want to get a final comment, and we can, sorry. I know we have a long day, and I want to make sure everyone gets their words in.
And I will be brief here. I appreciate that, Dr. Bray-Bran. I think that there is a culture that we have to be purposeful in rebuilding in a healthy way, and that is the basis of my comments.
Thank you. I have Karen Corbett Sanders, followed by Ms. Schultz, and then Ms. Evans.
And I will try to be very quick. First, Bravo, thank you very much, especially from the standpoint of linking the budget to the strategic plan and future decision-making, always going back to how we spend resources, and is it part of our strategic plan. So thank you. That's something that, as you know, I've been advocating for since, before I was on the board, and I'm thrilled to see it. I do want to echo Ms. Kies-Gamara's comments about the inclusion of our students with disabilities in a more intentful manner in the strategic plan. I think we've heard it loud and clear from our constituents and some concerns about it. And so from that standpoint, on slide eight, you do have a metric regarding English language learners, being proficient in English within five years. It might be a good place to also look at having a metric on on-time graduation rates for students with disabilities, but also as part of that, looking at whether or not we can get some changes to our graduation diplomas to address some of the concerns so that we can make sure that not only do we do right by them as they are in our schools, but we do right by them by creating opportunities once they leave here, and we don't want to have opportunities shut off because they don't have a standard diploma. And so along that, those lines, I also want to talk about your students feeling respected and included. I think that's a good place to also look at our students with disabilities and making sure that they feel included. And so I'm hoping that when we do our readout in that area, that we will provide disaggregated data for the different subgroups. And then I want to thank Dr. Presidio for your comments about the training on cultural responsiveness, because one of the things that I think we have to be aware of is that we can't do one-and-dones. That cultural, that professional development requires ongoing and iterative professional development, because we all know that we have to be reminded of things. And so although it's expensive, I think it's more expensive for us not to do the professional development in these areas, so the opportunity cost of not doing it. And then the last item I want to talk about is the inclusion of a device as a metric. I'm very concerned, and this is on page nine, where we say access to a computer or tablet, and then we also reiterated on page, I think the page before. And my concern about, yeah, on page eight and page nine, my concern is that that is the mechanism, a computer tablet or a computer or a tablet is the mechanism to acquiring knowledge and acquiring skills. But I get very concerned when we use that as the end goal or even as a measurable goal in our overall strategic plan unless you can clearly define the why. And so that would be my only concern. I know that we're going to get a presentation on FCPS ON, and it's not that I'm not supportive, but that is certainly not something that, you know, it's the, it's kind of like, well, we need a road.
Yeah, so just very briefly on that, since you asked, you know, why did we include it in here? I think you raised some really good questions and make some good points about whether or not it's the appropriate type of measure to have in this type of plan. The reason we did it is, you'll remember when we talked about achievement gaps in our new language? We talked about achievement gaps in different ways than we had before. Now we're talking about opportunity, access, and attainment gaps. And as we'll talk about later today in the FCPS ON presentation, that device is so much about equity. FCPS ON is so much about equity in terms of closing those opportunity and access gaps that we thought that it was important to try to include some measures and some success measures around opportunity and access as well. It doesn't mean that it fits there, and certainly we could take it out if that's the board's pleasure, but I just wanted to comment on why we put it there.
Okay, and then my final comment, and it is regarding the, you know, going back to fidelity of implementation. You know, the secret sauce of Fairfax County is our excellent schools, but we need to find a way of ensuring that the experience for our students with the various opportunities available to them is consistently delivered to every student regardless of where they live in Fairfax County. And for too often, we have, we've trialed programs, we've rolled out programs, and they're available in one region, not in another region. They are, you know, goes back to summer programs, daily programs. And so I just think we have to have a goal somewhere here or a metric somewhere that actually does the consistent delivery of these programs and opportunities across the county. And I know you say 90%, but sometimes when you do big numbers like 90%, they're masked by, they mask some of the discrepancies.
Thank you. Five minutes, you get a gold star, Ms. Corbett Sanders. I have Ms. Schultz, followed by, is it Ms. Evans?
Sometimes we strive for a bronze star. I'm going to try for five. So first of all, I want to acknowledge the comment, Mr. Smith, that you made about improving sort of the mechanism of the delivery of this report, because I was a little bit frustrated by the draft that we originally provided, and being able to follow the Hansel and Gretel popcorn trail from what you want into where you're going. For me, though, and if we could go, well, this is a perfect slide, what we had previously with the desired outcomes and what the actionable items were to get to the goal were far less clear. So the sort of plain language speak of what is it we're trying to do, how are we going to do it, and how are we going to know that we did it are great. I do have some questions. If we could go to slide eight, for example, student success, elimination of gaps. Okay, so we've got at the bottom, I'm looking at my notes, not if it's here. For here, we have some specific groups that are called out. Some of my colleagues have mentioned students with disabilities. If we could go from this to slide 18. So slide 18 does a little bit of an explanation of where is it that we are now? Because it's one thing to say where we're going, it's another thing to understand where we are now, because if you're going to go, you know, if it's a destination, you have to know where you are first. So this... So, this helps to some degree with some of the markers. But I get the impression with these underdevelopments that we're not quite ready to launch. So, my question is, why is it exactly that we're doing this now without these goals being ready? Like, what is it that's going to? I mean, we're basically relaunching a strategic plan, and underdevelopment, 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 and underdevelopment. I mean, these are the kind of major categories. So, what's the hole here?
I can speak to a few that are on here, and there might be some folks in the ORC office in the room that want to speak to some of these as well. I think you have to take each of them individually, right? So, just starting with the first that are underdevelopment around Advanced Academic, Algebra I, Honors, Advanced Placement, IB. We obviously have all of that data. We reported that back in the Goal 1 report to the board in April. It's only a couple of months ago. It feels like that was a really long time ago, but we have that information, right? But what we're trying to do here is get this three-year baseline average. So, we're waiting for those new test scores to come in and be validated, to update those baselines with the most recent data, so that we can actually then set those performance targets based on our most recent data instead of a lagging set of data that's a year old. So, that's kind of true in a number of these measures. Passing a college-level exam or earning an industry certification, we need to clarify which particular exam or exams do we want to include in that metric. So, it could be SAT, it could be ACT, it could be AP, it could be IB, it could be all of those, it could be any of those, it might be just one of those. So, there's a little bit more discussion around some of these that we need to have to firm them up, but getting the data at that point should be fairly straightforward.
Okay. So, then, I have a slightly more nuanced question. It's one thing to talk about student achievement, but I think that what we miss, and what we miss in a lot of the schools, maybe Ms. Kies-Gamar was a little bit going there, student growth progression. I don't feel like I can find where this is represented in the strategic plan. And that becomes a crucial discussion, is not just where does a student land on a marker, you know, compared to other students? It is, what has that, how has that student grown? You know? And the ability of a teacher to move a dial, even if they miss a target, if they've moved the dial 30 or 40, you know, percent of the way, that is a massive effort. And I'm concerned that we'll lose that, that, you know, everybody has to hit the same target. Well, if they're not all starting in the same place, the ability to hit the same target is one way to measure, but the other way to measure is a more nuanced measure. Is there something anywhere in here where we're talking about the student growth progression model?
I would say there's very little in here where we're really contemplating that kind of methodology, and I don't want to speak again for the ORC staff and say that that's easy to calculate, because it's not. But I think, you know, we've been operating on this idea of kind of past practice, and, you know, we've, you know, been reporting kind of our subgroup data to a particular standard for a while. We've started to contemplate student growth measures at the individual student level and at the classroom level and school level, but at the division-wide level, we haven't really done that. So, if that was something that the board wanted to do, we would need, I think, a little bit more discussion as a leadership team about how difficult it would be to do that.
The reason I'm driving to this, this is really the project momentum methodology of, instead of a cookie cutter approach, that everybody, you know, gets the same amount of money on needs-based staffing or whatever, that we're driving the dollars to student achievement for student growth progression at the nuanced level, which is frankly, all that a parent and a student care about. They don't give a flying frig about what the rest of, you know, 4th graders are achieving of the same class, or the same subgroup, or the same culture, the same language, or, you know what? How is my child doing? That's what matters.
You know, one thing, Sloan, I'm talking out loud, which staff knows can be dangerous when I'm just freestyling, but, and I know it's not a measure that the board completely likes, but the state with, and Francisco, you're listening to me, okay. The new, I mean, in a good way, just to hear, the state changed and put student growth into the SOL accreditation measure. We could go back and talk to Mark, because we do have, I think this year, we're calculating it both the old way and the new way, right, Francisco? So, we might be able to get to something at schools that have shown that growth under the new one.
I think this also has to do with, frankly, our employees, is being able to acknowledge teachers, and instead of a teacher having a failing student or a failing classroom, how far have they moved the dial? So, that's a...
We'll take a look into it.
We can get into more of that. Can we go to Slide 10, please? I continue to have a problem with this slide. I expressed it in our private meetings. We, all future FCPS students will have access to high-quality early education programs. Folks, we don't have a charge on this area. We don't own children from 0 to 5. We simply don't. To me, this is the wrong charge. We don't, we have no control over this, and therefore, have no way to measure it. What we do have is an ability to control our relationship with the Board of Supervisors, and to look at facility space where it's needed, the proverbial, "it took me six years to get it" heat map of where the need is, and to deliver opportunities for access to early education programs where the need exists. And we know the 800 on the waiting list, but I don't even know what the 0 to 5 population is in Fairfax County, but we don't own children. Parents do. And all we can do is identify populations at risk, and then, what is our gap? It's the provision gap on our side, which is, we do not have the facility space in concert with the Board of Supervisors to be able to do this. And so, this is a resource identification and allocation problem. So, for my colleagues, I've always had a problem with this. I still have a problem with this. We aren't properly identifying the scope of the problem, and therefore, we're not focused on delivering the resources to handle the scope of the problem. Can we go to Slide 12, please? I'm going to go right back with Ms. Karen Kies-Gamar. All of this is focused on what students will do, and doesn't talk about, other than the last bullet, all employees will have the opportunity to take advantage of wellness resources. This is, the making healthy life choices also includes, on the disruptive behavior scale, us working as partners with parents, and if we do not get parental notification, I'm going to say it, I've been saying it, I helped write a state law that didn't get passed on this, if we do not get parent notification right on discipline and work with parents as partners in the education and the discipline of their students, then children will continue to be at risk. And we, this is, this is a low marker for us, and I know the superintendent understands where this board is on this, or at least a lot of us are. This is something I'm going to be relentless on, because I don't think we have it right. And I don't think that we've reflected here that the staff has a responsibility in the discipline choices and the outcomes for students by working as partners with parents. Can we go to just Slide 20 real quick? I don't understand this slide. I don't understand the top box of each of the colored boxes. Could somebody explain that to me? I just, I don't understand strategic money and operational money.
So, as we think about the dollars we're spending, we've got dollars that we're devoting to the items in the strategic plan. And then, you've got other things that are within our budget that aren't necessarily focused directly on the strategic plan. And so, there are software programs, there are contracts that we're engaged in that may not necessarily be tied to some of the items that are, that we've identified as priorities in this first go-around of the strategic plan, but it's still operational work that we're doing. And as we've worked with different departments, they've said, the strategic plan doesn't focus on the entirety of the work that we're doing in Fairfax County. So, we'd like to separate out and identify those dollars that we're spending on items in the plan, and then also recognize that there are operational dollars that we're spending that aren't directly related to the plan, and use the strategic decision-making cycle first on those items that are in the plan, and then use that same cycle on the rest of those dollars that are operational dollars.
Okay. That may make sense to, that may represent what you just said. That doesn't say that to me, and I think that's actually the one thing that's missing the most for me, is where's the money? Like, I don't understand the tie. I mean, and Ms. Corbett Sanders, you had a compliment on how this ties money to the strategic plan. I don't, there's a gap here for me on tying this strategic plan necessarily to money. And maybe that's what we can refine before we pass it. I have two last comments. This needs a glossary. I don't know what you're using as a definition for diversity. One of the things I've said repeatedly is, you know, do we have male teachers? I mean, is that what you mean by diversity? I don't think it is what you mean by diversity. But you got to define what you're saying. Culturally responsive. We have students from 200 countries who speak 182 languages, I think. What does culturally responsive mean? I don't think the average person knows what you're talking about. Are we going to try to be culturally responsive to students from 200 different countries? Or are there some components that, I mean, that's an umbrella term that frankly is, you know, cachet right now as edgy speak, and I don't know that that's necessarily going to be well-received, because we haven't defined it. So, money is the biggest issue for me, students with disabilities, parental notification, preschool, not being strategic, I don't think. But I do appreciate some of the changes that were made to get to plain language speak.
Thank you. Ms. Evans, followed by Ms. Strauss and Ms. Darnett Kofax.
Thank you. First of all, I want to compliment you on the significant improvements that have been made and the conversations. I know that was a lot of conversations with a lot of people. So, I do see us narrowing our focus, which is certainly good, and so, I see a lot of improvement here. I particularly appreciate, of course, the changes in the Karen culture and the going back to having our part of the responsibility for healthy students. I did want to get, before I start with my questions and comments, I wanted to get a clarification. Could you pull up the Action Crosswalk for me? So, I just wanted to clarify what we're doing here. It says original actions and then what we plan to achieve. What happens to the original actions?
So, the original actions are still there, and if you notice some of the examples that we used on the PowerPoint presentation?
Yes.
Those are actual original actions that are in process right now.
Okay. So, they're just, they're not going away?
So, they're not going away.
Okay. That's all, I wanted to make sure that they're not going away, because some of these are much more specific.
And this was an ad from, input from board members, that we ensure that we still reflect what those original actions were.
Okay.
And then, we haven't populated yet, because we haven't created those action plans, but where you see the red, you would also then see some of the action plans that actually populate the, how we're going to get to that particular...
Okay.
And how we're going to undertake that particular action.
Good, because the left-hand side, of course, is much more specific than the right-hand side, and we needed to capture that. Are we, when you're talking about how we're going to be developing, a lot of things are in development, things are going to come up in the fall, are we then going to have another work session once these things are developed? Is that the plan?
We hadn't gotten to that yet, but we certainly can. I think part of it is, you heard Marty talk about the quarterly reporting out of the goals. We can do that, we can have work sessions. That's one of the follow-up kind of conversations with you all. How often, and it'll help me, how often do you want to come? One of the things we're talking about redesigning our leadership team meetings is to put a specific strategy metric target and bring leadership teams focused for a two-hour session with us around that topic. So, that could be something in the end, like with board members. Do you want the whole plan, or do we want to spend some time? You know, right now, work sessions, driving our work sessions around the work and the strategic plan, let's, you know, we have the goal reporting, but you all feel sometimes like, gosh, that's a lot, and how we can dive into the strategic plan more and do a bigger piece. That's what we're going to try to do on our own end to better target even our thinking, because one thing, Sandy, I'm just being honest, some of these original actions, eh. I mean, we had them, not, 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 we haven't gotten the ROI, but we need to, some people have felt frozen, well, gosh, should we come back and tell the board it didn't work, or it's only working? Yeah, we got to come back and go, these aren't working, here are the others that we're suggesting.
And particularly because there are so many things that it says, you know, this is a work in progress, it's being developed, we're going to have it in the fall. You know, as one board member, I do think we need to have another work session then to come back and say, and get an update, where are we? You know, not just do this once a year, because there's so much there.
Sure.
So, that would be my advocacy.
Okay.
On some specific questions, I'm so delighted to hear that we've already met that 75% hiring goal by July 1. That's fabulous. So, of course, my next question is, if we've already met it, then why isn't our goal higher for next year?
Oh, you...
I know. But, you know, shouldn't we be striving for, you know, continual improvement? That's a real question.
And we can readjust that. We can certainly...
Yeah. I don't think we knew until just a week ago. Chase told me, and we've been working on these documents for a few months.
We didn't know, so...
We can tweak it, yes.
Okay. I do think that we need to be, you know, always progressing.
Continuous improvement.
Continuous improvement, exactly. I'm glad to see that we're going to try to eliminate all trailers. That's sure a big task, but...
That's aspirational.
Yeah, that is certainly aspirational. The strategic decision-making cycle, if I missed this, I'm sorry. Where does that stand? We have that somewhere in writing, or that's being developed?
So, we're working on that. We've been doing this whole process sort of all at the same time as we develop the strategic plan. So, ORC, the Office of Research and Strategic Improvement, will be shifting gears as we think about developing and fleshing out that cycle even more. As we posted the ROI documents, to give you a refresher, we talked about the different levels of ROI at one time with the board, and the very lowest level is that cost per pupil, and trying to figure out whether or not there's an academic ROI, a monetary ROI. And if you think about, the highest level of ROI would be that social ROI. We brought some reports to the board in the past focused on early childhood and the benefits of early childhood, and that when you think about the cost avoidances, you're actually getting to more of that social ROI than just simple cost per pupil. So, we see ourselves pulling this cycle together and framework together, and using it initially just on these items that are in the strategic plan, so that we're not, at the end of this year, saying, should we continue with this? And if so, why? Or why not? We really want to apply that and have conversations as a leadership team. I'm actually having a retreat next week with, or, yeah, next week with our support assistant superintendents to talk about what this process might look like as we think about effectiveness within the school system. So, we don't have it fleshed out yet.
But we will see that.
But you will see that. One other thing with the documents, and this goes back to what Ms. Schultz said earlier about needing more aspects to the plan, what we've provided with these documents were simply to get feedback from the board, so that we know what our direction is, so that we can start putting those pieces together, the glossary, the other aspects. If you think back to the original Ignite, the booklet that had all the information, the mission, the vision, the values, you will see that same type of document at the end of this process. This is really to get your input, to say that, yes, we agree, we're giving you the thumbs up, now go out and create. So, that's what we're hoping to get at the end of this meeting, and once we do that, you will see the same level of plan that you've seen in the past in terms of attention to detail and information for the community.
Okay. I have a couple more specific questions and then a couple of comments. If you go to the baseline and target, could you pull that up for me, please? I'm going to look at the goal on all schools will have low rates of students with frequent absences. It says we... It says we currently have 155 out of 191, and our goal is 156. This is an area where, that affects our accreditation, and I'm wondering if we shouldn't have a significantly higher goal there. If we only add one school to the current, how did we come up with 156 for only adding one school in terms of reducing chronic absentees?
All of our performance targets were created with mathematical calculations, really. It was about getting a baseline and then an average of whether it was an increase or decrease, and then a final number. So we can certainly raise that number, it's not a problem. We just were sticking to what our formulas were for all the performance targets.
So my advocacy there would be, we have to have a higher, we really have to have a higher goal there because otherwise, if we don't, we're going to see quite a few of these schools losing accreditation, so, are full accreditation, and I realize we get a little bit of leeway there.
We can, you know, one of the things that I love about a Monday work session is we have our leadership team meeting tomorrow. So we'll debrief on some of these pieces and be able to take some of these tweaks between now and your vote next Thursday, and this can be one we can make some changes.
I would love to see a re, you know, revisiting of that number. In goal three, it talks about incentives for critical needs and hard-to-fill positions. We had gone down that road before. Have we made progress on recommending incentives for hard-to-fill, high-need schools? Or positions, not schools, positions?
Sure. We, you know, we initially, out of the gate, utilized an approach where we were trying to provide incentives for folks to sign up to teach with us. And so that was a very wide net that was cast. We weren't getting very specific in terms of the content areas or the types of positions we were providing the incentives. We just wanted to get folks on board. We're continuing to have those dialogues to look at narrowing that focus and identifying which areas and what approach we're gonna take. So we yearly identify critical need areas based upon a variety of different factors. One being the number of vacancies we open the school year with. Two, looking at what the state has identified as a critical need. Three, looking at what the availability of candidates were in the pool for that particular content area, and we'll continue to do that work. We're still working on identifying how we're going to action that in terms of providing a specific incentive.
So we can, can we expect to see a recommendation on that in the coming school year?
Absolutely, yes.
Yes, okay. Good, good. That's something we've been wanting for a while. So just a couple of general comments. I certainly agree with those that have talked about our needing to revisit parent notification. You know, as my colleagues know, I've been a strong supporter of enhanced parent notification in our discipline system, and I think we, it's time to revisit that. We need to do that. On our, going back to the original overarching piece, I think maybe it's on page one of the, just the one-pager. I think that this is much improved from what we had seen before. I will say, and I'm not gonna put an amendment on this now, but I do think that for the coming year, we probably wanna revisit the overarching one on the caring culture because I would say that culturally responsive sta, that was, you had it, that was the one I was looking at. The culturally responsive staff is certainly important. I'm not sure it really encompasses all we're trying to say with caring culture, though. I mean, caring culture goes far beyond that to be a welcoming, inclusive, equitable, healthful environment. And so whether there's time between now and the next meeting, or whether this is something we just have to revisit in future, I would suggest that we have one that's just more all-encompassing there. It just, it goes beyond, you know, cultural training. And then last, but certainly not least, at some point, we have to tackle, as a board and as a school system, socioeconomic resegregation of our school system. That's not explicitly pointed out here, and I know that's a gigantic issue, but we've gotta tackle it. We have to. So somehow, some way, I would like to see us take that on.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. I wanna make sure everyone does have a chance to speak. We're at about 12:20, and I believe have six more board members, but we're doing all right. This is very important work. I have Ms. Strauss, welcome back. We hope you enjoyed your break. Thank you for your service. You didn't get a chance to hear us thank you last time. And then Ms. Darnett Kofax and Ms. McLaughlin.
Thank you, yes. Eleven of us, my entire family, got together for the first time ever, and we had a wonderful time. Thank you. I only have two pounds of sand in my car. First of all, I'm very pleased with the overall scope, framework. I think it is much more focused. The, clearly, you all have sought a lot of input from the community, from school board members, from our own educators, and it shows. So I'm really very excited. And going back, a couple of things that I really appreciated, page seven, I liked your hot links to the learning model and the capstone projects. I love hot links. I'm a visual person, so I can see it also on page eight, the closing the achievement gap framework is excellent. And then on page 10, the equitable school readiness plan, that is something that I'm not sure everybody is aware of, the depth and the detail work, and that's been going on for many years. And that really shows the teamwork between FCPS, the county staff, Fairfax Future, the Health Department, Child Fine, even the relationship with the people that run the Zero to Two program in Nova Health. It is amazing, and it really offers resources from those parents who are not going to take advantage of any formal programs, but we still have opportunities for families, for home visiting, or just for things at the library. It is amazing, the scope of resources that are there that help with school readiness and the fact that we actually do track school readiness. And that has made a huge difference in the number of children who start or have the opportunity to start kindergarten, ready to learn, and are bridging opportunities in August. I know we would like to have a lot more of them, but I, if, my colleagues, if you've not really read thoughtfully the equitable school readiness plan, I encourage you to take a look at it. That's been in development for a long time. It's a serious plan, and we've got an awful lot of good people that work on that whenever here, go out for grant opportunities. Yes, it'd be great if we had more resources, more money, et cetera. But I always think about how they talk about the breeding of funding and resources. So I think everyone has to be commended for the work that they've done on that. On page 15, I have a question. When we talk about under success, and employee retention rates will be at least 90%, are you talking about 90% per school? Because we know that the retention rates on the national data after five years in education, we're not gonna get 90%. But tell me, the employee retention rates will be at 90% as that per school, per year? Over what period of time?
So ultimately, the measure is looking at the aggregate data. Ultimately, we do have the opportunity to look at specific school data and work within that context, to work with the leaders of the regions and the schools to make some improvements there. But the overall, the 90% mark was an aggregate number across the division.
And is it per year?
Yes.
Yes.
And there's some additional information on the baseline page where it's broken out by administration, by teachers, and then by instructional assistants and support staff. And so that would be reported out to the board.
So you're gonna look at all levels? Okay.
And Sean, right now, just for a check for the board, what, we're in the mid-80s? Is that right?
We're closer to 90%.
So we are that close?
We're close, yeah.
Good. All right. That's very good. I didn't realize we were that close. On page 18, which is the larger graph, I am very appreciative of our goal of having fresh, current data as baseline. And that has always been a challenge, that we end up, our data is always lagging data, and it's not, I mean, it's nice, but it's not useful when you wanna be strategic. So I am hoping that we really can use fresh data at all times, so that we're not using lagging data. On the, several of my colleagues have talked about life after high school is not just college, you know, how do we get at the career piece? And a number of us have been at meetings with community college and all of the very interesting partnerships that we're having. And I guess when we are looking at both the indicator on industry certification for graduation and then a plan for college and career after high school, I would hope that we would be looking at this as an opportunity for reporting out in greater detail and what we're doing with community college, what we're doing with associate degrees with dual enrollment and all those other pieces. So I don't know exactly what your plans are, but I think that that is the picture that is very important to us, and I know is important to our economic well-being in the community. That's what we've heard. And I believe, yes, that covers my comments, so.
Go. Oh, sorry.
Okay. Silver star, Ms. Strauss. Five and a half minutes. Wonderful. Thank you.
Ms. Darnett Kofax, Ms. McLaughlin, and then Mr. Moon.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Smith and your team, for getting this together. We really appreciate your hard work. Those of us who were on the board, the previous board, when we started this process, trying to endeavor to put together some kind of document or some kind of roadmap to make our system-wide priorities understood and where we were spending monies outside of compensation, which takes up a large portion of our. When we often couldn't find agreement, I felt there was so much deflection that that's kind of where we started this strategic approach. So it is, one, when a strategic plan is done well, it doesn't sit on a shelf. So I would ask for a continual review if this type, leadership team can decide when it happens outside of goal reports, because the plan itself, the goal reports are part of it, but the overall plan, I think, needs to be looked at. And I think that will allow the community and all the leadership team, as well as the board and community advocates, to understand where we are and what we're doing. So I hope we can just come up with a plan. I don't know if we need to do it more than once because of the goal, once a year, I'm saying, but because the goal reports come up as part of it, and I think that that will be enough to, because that's showing the elements, and then we look at it as an aggregate once. I wanna thank my colleagues. I agree with so many of you and so many of your comments, and I know we're a long day, so I will try to be brief. I do wanna thank you first, again, for, I started saying this, for the intentional alignment of budget resources with actions for this plan. When we're in the heart of budget season, we often talk about the budget as our moral document. This is where we are, right? These plans, what we're doing. And when people say, I don't understand your priorities, and I think, you know, oftentimes we're, the legisla, the state legislative, they understand our legislative priorities, but what are our system-wide priorities? And this document is something we're saying, this is where our resources align, this is where we are, and this is the progress we're making. So I think we're well on our way to do that as we continue to simplify and refine, and I thank you for that. There's so, there's so many things. I'll start with pre-K. Pre-K, while it's not in our K through 12 system, it quickly becomes our issues. So that's why, for seven years now, we have been talking about the need to do pre-K. We talk about it, skip was developed as part of pre-K as a reason. Skip has grown in priorities, and I don't think that's necessarily bad. But what hasn't happened, perhaps, is the intentionality, I mean, it comes down to funding with the pre-K issue. The intentionality of funding has not been there. I know there have been, you know, reasons for that, the Great Recession, the need to compensate our teachers, but, you know, I'm glad to see it's up there as one of the top priorities and how we go about that. And I absolutely think we have to engage our county leaders and funding bodies on that, both state and county on that. When you talk about equity, equity cannot have a cookie cutter approach. I'm so looking forward to seeing the details of the modeling. I think when, Scott, one of the comments that you made was very, very important when we were talking about FPAC and we were talking about needing to, what if we did a, what if we did the, what we've been calling the nuclear option and blew up the boundaries? And one of the reasons that people felt, you know, because I don't wanna go to that school, or, we can't have that, if we do this right, and you said it, if we do this right, if you move from A school to B school or B school to C school, it's gonna be consistent the way it's delivered. There is going to be opportunities for that student, whether you're a high achiever, whether you're new to our community. And that's hard to do, but that has to be the ultimate goal of this, having equitable delivery at all of our schools. Some of you made note of the growth model. I think that's very, very important. I, you know, we've talked about how to use markers other than SOLs. I think that's very complex. I don't think it's out of the question, but I think it is complex. But, you know, SOLs, we often talked about, didn't allow for growth. Project Momentum has seen great success. We need to continue to work on that. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop there, but because that's a lot, what I don't want you all to do is feel discouraged about by these comments because I think we're well on our, on a pathway to moving forward. I think what this, what this does, it's kind of like, some of those, sounds weird, but when you have those decluttering books, they tell you, you pull everything off your shelves and then you see what you have. And I think that's where we are. We've pulled everything and we've prioritized it, and now we're saying, how do we go forward? How do we get to this point where we need to be? And we know in some places, it's a mountain to climb, some places it's a hill, and some places we're almost there. So I thank you for your work. Again, I think for me, alignment of resources, continual monitoring by this board and continuing to put it out there, the community will see this as part of us, and there won't be those questions. How are you spending your money? Why is this school different from the other? But we do, those are some of the mountains we have to climb. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Darnett Kofax. Six minutes, silver star, and thank you for getting, reminding us of the big picture. Appreciate that. We have Ms. McLaughlin, followed by Mr. Moon, and then Ms. Hines and I, before we take any very quick go-bangs. Thank you.
First of all, I appreciate how Ms. Darnett Kofax tried to capture important sentiment that all 12 of us on the board, I am certain, appreciate the complexity of trying to develop this, and our input is always meant to be collaborative and, you know, hopefully to refine this shared work. And as I talked about with Mr. Smith and some of the leadership team members, I want to approach this with a smile on my face and communicate appreciation because I am someone who loves continuous improvement, and sometimes my focus tends to be on, how can we make it better?
And we ask for that smile on your face, too.
That's right. So I am, I'm in, with intentionality, working on this delivery because.
Keep smiling.
I, I, I first of all, think it's extremely hard to develop something like this and have 12 elected officials weigh in. And I know we had our meetings with you, but I wanna go to the very. but I want to go to the very highest level that I think Ms. Evan Stare did touch on, but didn't go as far as I wanted, which is, this feels very rushed to me in terms of board approval. And Ms. Schultz, I think you talked a little bit about it. There's areas that we are completely sympathetic and understanding for staff where it says under development, you guys are working on it. But, you know, to our new Chair of the Board, I don't understand. And so the first question I would like at very macro levels, why are we rushing to vote on this next week? Because I do not feel that we are ready for the twelve of us to put our hands in the air and say, yep, this is exactly how we want it to be. So whether it's you or Dr. Braybrand, somebody, just explain briefly, why do we have to vote on this next week?
As far as a vote, I think that can be the board's conversation. I'm open-minded. I want the board to say this is the right direction so I can walk into the August Leadership Conference and focus our staff. One thing I feel all of you said, this is better, clearer, conciser than what we had before. And part of what I want to tell you, separate from any of the changes or tweaks, people simply understanding what we have, understanding the plan, is actually half of the issue. Does the teacher in the classroom, the principal, the parent, understand our plan? Janie mentioned some of our links. We've been talking about Portrait of a Graduate. Do people really know what Portrait of a Graduate means? Closing the Achievement Gap Framework, we put a link. The School Equitable Readiness Plan, we've had it for five or six years. A lot of people in our community don't even know what it is. So I think part of what we've done is made what we're doing even clearer. So that's the part. If we don't want to, we could postpone a vote, but I would love support to say, this is the right direction and you can go forward with it. And if you'd want to vote later on during the year or no vote at all and just make this a. Part of the reason I brought it really is a vote is someone said you all voted on it years ago and I didn't want to look like I was doing something that the prior setup had been. So I'm totally open-minded. I do want direction in general. Hey, you're on the right track and you can start messaging like that one pager. We really want to get out into our community and go, hey, here's where we're headed. Not that there won't be tweaks, but that this is the general direction we're going.
I appreciate that, Dr. Braybrand, because as I understand it, the board already had voted on previously the desired outcomes, that far-left column. That's something that we voted on. And then metrics, aspirational performance targets, strategic action, that's what staff has then been working on. And it's a massive effort. But in terms of the board, then being able to delve into those, like basically seventy-five percent of what this plan that's in front of us. So we had, you know, the desired outcomes, and that took us a long time. And I actually, to pick up on what Ms. Evan said earlier, I think under caring culture, I don't know how we ended up in that language, but in terms of a desired outcome of just cultural responsiveness when supporting families and then kids making, or students making healthy life choices, A, I said it should be students and staff. And so, you know, I don't know if that change got in there or not. But culturally responsive, as Ms. Evan said, we also want that employees will demonstrate cultural responsiveness and a welcoming environment for da-da-da-da-da. Because otherwise, it just looks like we think that caring culture means this and caring culture means, you know, all of those things. And I am still hearing from families in my community where we're not succeeding in being as welcoming and collaborative with our families and our employees as we should be. And it worries me a little bit that that, even under caring culture, desired outcome is so specific that it looks like we don't recognize the importance of those components, too.
So one thing, we are going to talk after this presentation today. We can make a few tweaks between now and next Thursday. The vote is, again, a board piece. I want to be able to communicate, this is the direction we're headed as a school system to our employees for our kickoff in August. And that's the biggest intent around how we time this work to come to now.
And I would say to my colleagues, I would probably be more comfortable if we do consider that this work session is going to be a, Dr. Braybrand and staff, we think you're headed in the right direction. We look forward to fleshing out some of these, you know, performance metrics and things. And we don't need to be putting a vote on this next Thursday because I don't think it reflects well on the board that we're going to pass a document that just says, under development, under development. How do you provide governance if you don't even know what that is? And it's not a criticism on staff at all. I think we're asking you to bring us something that you're still working on. So I would be more comfortable saying, great, keep working on this. This is good. But that's at a very macro level where some of my concerns are. I did forward to my colleagues the Atlanta Public Schools Strategic Plan that, you know, I happened to find it while we're sitting in this work session, so you won't have had a chance to look at it. But I do think that, and I forwarded to some LT members, too. I think that that framework, to me, was very good because it is more consistent at a more macro level. This draft right now, I still feel at times we stay very macro, then we go super micro-granular. And I think sometimes we're almost going too granular. And then there's some in-betweens where we're missing pieces. And then I worry about what we're communicating, where our focus is. A couple of things that people talked about that I want to reinforce. Ms. Strauss, I agree, the hot links are awesome. But what I didn't understand is that one of the hot links for the learning model, which I want to understand what that means, it's a link to a fourteen-minute YouTube. I don't have fourteen minutes as a parent to watch a YouTube on the learning model. But we do have like a, I think, a one or a two-pager on the Capstone project. So I think we need to fix that hot link and that should look something like the Capstone. People want something they can digest. And I just, you know, that's such a crucial piece, but people need to understand what a learning model means. For the Capstone projects, very macro, I shared with staff and to my colleagues, I'm very worried that we're not talking enough in this report about student and employee stress and workload. And that, you know, the Capstone is a feel-good that is, you know, it's talked about at a national level. But we're spotlighting the Capstone project and we don't spotlight anything about under, you know, any one of these three or the four areas. We're talking about employee and student's stress. And so, and workload is such a key component. So when I looked at Capstone, I went, how many teachers are going to groan and say, oh, my God, my plate is already so full and now I've got to, you know, figure out how we're going to be grading and assessing capstones? I also think we need to help with the pager on the Capstone. In academia, Capstone is very much understood. And I have a sister and a brother-in-law who are professors, so I hear it. But there's a lot of people who don't know what Capstone is. And I don't think the document still helps you really understand, what does that mean for my child? I will say that end-of-year learning is still not where it needs to be. I am still hearing from my families that the SOLs are done, APs are done, IB is done, and there is video watching being done. And the last few weeks of school, we're not. And so whether Capstone happens there for rich learning would be fantastic. But I'd even, as a board member, want to understand, where are we putting this capstone in? Because right now, I just hear stressed-out students and teachers trying to get through the curriculum. And that worries me there. Under fiscal stewardship, I really appreciate staff brought forward two more metrics because I was the last one to get the briefing, you guys. And there was the one metric on the WABE guide on cost per pupil. And I said, that is the wrong message to communicate to all of our stakeholders that we're so committed to resource stewardship and the only thing we're going to do is take something out of WABE. So I think staff did a good job of trying to bring some more there, but that part's not there. And that alone would give me pause to be voting next week on this because I don't think we're, again, where we need to be on defining that.
Well, perhaps what I would just say is, we'd love to take the feedback that we get from everyone today, debrief in LT about that tomorrow. And, you know, we'll put out our best thinking based on this feedback as we prepare for next Thursday and whether the board chooses to want to have a formal vote or support the general direction. I think, well, it's for the board to decide. I think the strategic plan's a very important document for the system, trying to get, as you said, twelve folks to get exactly every fine point. We've worked very hard. I can't tell you how much of leadership time we've been doing on this. I do want to use the moment of next month to say, there's clarity, there's conciseness. Let's move forward. And you all can work with me perhaps and think about what's the best way to do that, even if there could be tweaks and little changes. But how not to, how not, how to use this as an opportunity to reintroduce the strategic plan, get that greater clarity of language and understanding out there. I think our folks are ready for that, too.
Yeah, I understand that. And as I said, I think that I would rather we provide the feedback of, thank you for this really great work. The board has certainly postponed votes in the past when we said, you know, we're still working to refine a document. And I think you could be able to do this. But I would rather not, as a board member, have to put my hand up and either say no or abstain because I don't think that's what we want to be communicating. And I do want to reinforce something that we heard from our citizen participation, which was about our students with disabilities and how are we adequately capturing what is a very sizable population? And in particular, I think it's heartbreaking to think that there are students with disabilities graduating with a type of diploma from our school system that doesn't allow them to qualify for federal and/or financial aid opportunities. That, I mean, you talk about a strategic focus. I think that is something that we absolutely have to address, not, you know, oh, in the next couple of years, we should be partnering with the General Assembly to get that fixed within the year because.
We're already working on it, already working on it.
But it's not captured here and it's a big piece of student success. So, you know, and then for parent notification, I do think that is something that this board has been very committed to. And, but that is a piece of what I mentioned earlier on granularity. I mean, a strategic plan, and we're drooling all the way down to a sixty-plus-page SR and R and talking about parent notification. Like, I think we need to speak macro on our commitment to student discipline because there's a lot of things Ms. Keys-Gamara and several other colleagues know. We're not where we want to be on student discipline and I worry that we just zero in and focus there and then we've kind of signaled everything else is okay. So again, I know I'm supposed to wrap it up. I will just say that that's why this whole thing gives me pause because I know LT worked on this thing for days and months and whatever. And we're going to commit two hours for twelve of us to be comfortable with where this is. I really hope as a next step, we will think about, do we really have to formally vote on this? When I don't, I'd rather give the superintendent guidance that you're heading in the right direction. Let's continue to refine this and have a better vote in the fall when this thing is, got filled in, all the blanks are filled. Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin.
No, thank you for sharing your feedback, Ms. McLaughlin. Mr. Moon, Mr. McElveen, and then Ms. Hines and I will speak before very, very brief go-bangs.
Okay. Let me start with the overarching question first to, I guess, Mr. Smith, if not Dr. Braybrand, that how many, in our current strategic plan, how many desired outcomes are there? Thirty-some? Forty?
Close over forty.
Over forty. And then from those over forty, you winnow them down to.
Eight.
Eight to focus on for the next phase of sort of our focus on strategic plan. And that is based upon feedback from the school board members.
That's based on feedback from school board members, yes.
Okay. And that is my recollection. That is why I'm trying to see.
We went through a prioritization process with the leadership team and with the school board. We brought both ideas to the table. The school board had input. And then we went through at least two work sessions where the board had an opportunity to prioritize. They gave us, you gave us input in January and said that this really wasn't appropriate with the dots. And so we went back to the drawing board and came back in March and had a very successful work session where we all, at the end of the night, were happy that we had gotten to a particular point and these are the eight that we landed on. And we ended early.
And even though I appreciate what Mrs. McLaughlin has said about, you know, at least several of these not having specific goals or some of those I see, whenever I see under development, I don't like those either. So I want to wait until what the leadership can, team can come up with based upon our comments today and see whether we'll be ready to vote on this at the next meeting. So I'll wait and see. But having said that, at the same time, I don't want us to just continue discussing it because I know, you know, next year, we have an election. We have a new board will come up coming in. And the following year, usually based upon my twenty years of experience, whenever there's a new board, new board wants to have our strategic plan. So they will have their sessions, which may go on a year or two. And then we need to come up with all base data again and new goals and new action plans. Then, after about a year after that, we have another election with a new board. So having experienced so many of those, I want to see whether we can wrap up this work. And I would say the sooner the better, but I'll wait until what you can come up with based upon today's feedback from the board members.
And I will add about the baseline data. So we had much more extensive data on a document. But after such feedback from stakeholder groups and board members, we went back and in an effort to be responsive, we changed many of our areas for success. But again, hadn't been able to develop those metrics and targets to support that because of the late feedback that we received. So we were, it does say under development, we are actively working to develop those measures.
Okay, thank you. And another thing that I want to ask you, also want to remind my board members, is that the goals you are proposing for us to adopt are basically aspirational goals. Am I correct?
Yeah. So we have the aspirational goals, which are in the one-pager. And then we have the benchmarks and two-year targets or the one-year targets that we're looking at and the supporting data.
So I was trying to remember that overall approach is to present our aspirational goals to the board members and to public because we'll be adopting this publicly, we'll see. And these as our aspirational goals. I'm not sure whether all of these are really aspirational as they should be. I know that you gave me an opportunity, provided your feedback matured and I promised that I would do that, just it's been busy for the last several weeks and I have not really been able to that. So it's an apology on my part for not to give you this kind of feedback earlier. But, you know, some of the things that I see, I don't find them to be as aspirational as they should be. For example, when you have a retention rate of ninety percent, we're talking about then basically saying that that's our aspiration, ninety percent, which means it's okay for us to lose as much as ten percent, ten percent. You know what? If you do use the ten percent after the end of five-year period, we will be losing about forty percent of our teachers, turnover rate is about forty percent. And we are saying that, that's okay. That's our aspiration. That's the highest we can go. I'm not sure whether I can accept it as our aspirational goal. And another thing that I think I've said this many times over to especially, Mr. Plattenberg is back there, so that eliminating our learning cottages, trailers. I thought, I see that your goal is to basically reduce the numbers by five percent per year. That seems to be your suggestion. With that, with a five percent, even when you do just a simple arithmetic, it's going to take us at least twenty years. I don't know. Twenty years, I may be really, I may not even be around in this county to see that happen. So I'm not sure whether that's, I would consider that to be an aspiration that this board should adopt. Yes?
If we look at the aspirational, the aspirational is that we're getting rid of them all. So we're saying that we want to get rid of all of those trailers, learning cottages, aspirationally. That's the target. Then when you look at the one year, the year-over-year, that's where we look at the five percent. And I think that we might be even adjusting that a bit because for a first go-around, that might be an aggressive for a one-year look. But aspirationally, we want to say we have no temporary spaces for students and that we're all in class. we have no temporary spaces for students, and that we're all in classrooms and buildings.
Thank you, thank you, thanks for reminding me that, that's aspiration, eliminate that. But when I saw that 5% decrease in the first year, that just immediately got me to think that it's going to take a long time, and I may never be able to see that before I retire from Fairfax County to go somewhere else.
And then I think as we continue to partner with our county partners, we would look at increasing that or being more aggressive as we see more funds coming in to allow us to do that. So I would look at that first year as being the, the one-year increment, and then using that as a leverage for us to be more aggressive as we work with our county partners to do that.
Okay, thank you. And on slide pay, slide 11, this is just minor, minor language tweak, that under success, staff refers for the disruptive behavior will be similar across student groups. I know what you're trying to say here, but when somebody just look at this, well, it could be similarly high across the board, maybe you might want to say similarly low across the board, or something to that effect. And one last one, one last one. The, the hiring, that I know what you're trying to say, that percentage, the diversity, diversity of the people we actually hire should be reflecting the diversity of the applicant, applicants, basically. But you know what, I have a different take on that, I probably, you may disagree with it, but I disagree with that approach. For Fairfax County, let's say that, you know, for the entire Commonwealth of Virginia, for example, Asian population may be only 6%. Fairfax, it's about 20%. So for the entire Commonwealth of Virginia, the applicant pool, those who may be in, in a, you know, education school, maybe only 6%, but I am looking for 20% to be among those applicants to Fairfax County, because of that's the diversity of this county. So my aspirational goal is, rather than using the diversity of the applicant pool available in, in the Commonwealth of Virginia, I want to see that to reflect the diversity of where I'm living, Fairfax County. That's my aspiration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moon, nine minutes, silver star, thank you. Mr. McElveen?
So I think, Mr. Moon, he teed a couple things up for me, and, and I agree with him that the, the targets here, in many cases, are not aspirational. And based on the meeting that I had with, with staff, it was my understanding that these targets were not aspirational, that they were seen as realistic. So I don't know if there's a misunderstanding on my part. But I think i- if we look at these as aspirational, you know, a, a lot of these are problematic, but the, the one that's most problematic for me is graduation rate, which is pegged at 90%. And we're currently above that, so are we saying, you know, we're, we're going to lower our standards? So, you know, do what you want with others, but I do think graduation rate should be 100%. On research, resource stewardship, this came up in our, our meetings as well. I'm glad to see the piece on the trailers, but another thing we had discussed was the 25-year replacement cycle. So I don't know if there's any interest in, in revisiting that, but I would like to see that. And then finally, I'm glad to see that the, the cartoons have been eliminated. I will say, in the forthcoming presentation on FCPS ON, unfortunately, the cartoons have reappeared, and the cartoons are not inclusive of our population, so I do hope we continue to avoid that where possible.
Mr. McElveen, double gold star. Ms. Hines, and I will speak, I have only two very brief go-backs. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, thank you very much. So, this is very challenging, and I, I think there's always going to be, when you try to plan strategically, that tension between, you know, taking dives that are too deep and taking too long to kind of pin it to the wall and start working on it, right? And I think that's what we're trying to do right now, is to pick the things that we think are strategically important. Right now, for the next couple of years, it's not that the other work is not happening, but it's, so, it is tough. Just a couple of things. I think on trailers, I don't know, I would, I would only say that, you know, that goal is also, or achieving that goal is also about our willingness as a board to do some hard things on boundaries and programs. So it's not just about getting money from the county to, to build more brick and mortar. I think on the question, you know, on the one-pager, on whether it says culturally responsive staff, that to me also is, you know, we're, we're biting off what we think is particularly important right now. And when we look at, and healthy life choices, I think both of those, culturally responsive staff and healthy life choices, those are the things that we're most worried about, is stress and wellness, and are we really achieving equity? You know, and that has to do with cultural responsiveness. I don't think we're saying that we're not also doing everything else, we're just saying we're going to put specific focus and energy and resources into those things. So, I don't know, I, I, I guess I like it the way it is. On closing the achievement gap framework, we've had that for a while, some years, and so I, I guess what I'll be looking for, and I don't know if, Dr. Presidio, if you want to talk, speak to this right now, we've, we've had that for a while, and we have not seen our achievement gaps moving in the right direction. Definitely, certainly across the board, and some of them have actually been moving in the wrong direction. So I guess my question is just, what, what do you anticipate that we'll be doing differently? Are we changing that plan? Are we implementing it differently?
Yeah, I, I think more than anything, we're implementing it differently, or that's what we're attempting to do here. I mean, we created the framework, it's an evidence-based framework that has six different areas of focus, recognizing the complexity of closing achievement gaps, right? So what are the things that we can do that are within our span of control in FCPS? So, Ready to Learn is a driver, and that's not just early childhood, that's getting kids ready to learn, to come in socially and emotionally, and healthy every day, ready to learn when they're in the classroom, right? All the way through family engagement, access to rigor, academic support, college and career readiness, our cultural proficiency work around relationships. Nobody can do all of those things at the same time, and we had always recognized that. But I think we had made too much of a suggestion, perhaps, that schools align their school improvement plans and their work with strategies that are evidence-based in the CAG framework. What we're suggesting now is that we want to facilitate a much more explicit and deliberate attempt for schools to develop school improvement plan goals in alignment with the CAG framework, based on what their data is saying, not just SOL data, but how welcoming is their environment? I mean, we, we have audits that you can run, and we've, we've run them, how welcoming is your front office, how welcoming is your school to families, right? So depending on what area of focus, we want to provide more kind of targeted professional development of group, having groups of schools that are working on the same things, working together with support and coaching from central office staff, with a much more deliberate expectation to implement school improvement plan goals aligned with, with the framework.
Okay, thank you, that's very helpful. On, I just have two more things. On device per student, and this will come up in our next conversation, too, the one-to-one, I would just throw out there that maybe it makes more sense to have that as a goal from third through 12th grade, because K to 2, that's a lot of resources, and I'm not sure just kind of pedagogically that we really need to do that, but that'll come up later. And then finally, on, on measures, right? SOL scores, you know, we, we bristle at SOL scores, and I think over the years, you know, the, the different ways that we've tried to approach that, one is to just add more meaningful measures. It's more of a balanced measurement, sort of a framework, right? And so that's where what you were just talking about, Dr. Presidio, comes in, we're measuring a wider array of things, and that's where the capstone projects come in, too, I think, you know? And this notion of showing growth rather than, you know, a one-time score, you know, end-of-the-year score for a kid. As a teacher, you know, I, I get the desire to show growth, I get the desire to measure all these other things as a balanced framework. But what I worry about also as a teacher is, all of that is more measuring, and all of that is more work for teachers. And there is this feeling in the, always in the classroom, that you're, you're going through a lot of hoops to measure stuff, that you're not sure anybody will even look at, right? So I think if we're going to go to, you know, snapshot SOL scores, or some kind of growth measure of SOL scores, I think we just need to make sure that we are learning from all the experiences that have been going on the last 10 years, about how to do that in a way that doesn't overburden teachers, and actually gives us useful information. Personally, I, I do, I did a capstone project this year in fifth grade, I loved it. Now, I had, it's in Arlington, now I had a lot of freedom. I had a lot of freedom to do it the way I wanted to do it, and I think that helps teachers an awful lot, if we say that in your collaborative teams, you will have a lot, you will be empowered to do this in the way you want to do it. I think that goes a long way to making it seem less like a burden and more like something useful. But, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. So I do, I want to thank you again. I, I think the main sentiment here is, this is definitely a better document than at least I came into as a board member, and I do appreciate all of your work over the year, all of the staff time, and the time you have taken, and the feedback you've taken from us, so I truly appreciate that. I have a couple smaller points, but overall, I think the only thing I, I want to add on kind of the bigger picture, and I know you alluded to it a little bit in the past, Dr. Brabrand, is this is really important work, and, and for that I do, my feeling is I would like to vote on it on next week or in two weeks. For me, this is the most important thing we do as a school system, and to say, all right, let's not let perfect be the enemy of the good, this is a much better plan, and I think it's time that we be able to start to really, truly implement, have those action items. But then overall, the communication. So for me, how are we going to communicate this? How are we going to get it to the families, to the kids, to the teachers, to our stakeholders across the community? That, you know, I would like to see, and I, you know, I'm happy to bring something forward, if that's not the plan, maybe this is something PEC, the next PEC, can help the school system work on. But I do think that how we communicate this beyond just this board table and leadership is, is critical, and will be critical, in getting the, the support and the buy-in and seeing that move as well. It's not just how we implement it, but right, how we communicate it.
And we recognize that we did not do a good job of that the last time around, so...
Thank you. So for that, on the, on the smaller things, so I did not, there's one thing I think I didn't catch when we went through this, it does say FCPS Strategic Plan, School Year 2018 to 2020. So I believe we are speaking about two school years, or are we just speaking about next school year? So 2018, 19, 19, 20?
I think we may have...
And this is where our data kind of, it's important to understand.
We may have corrected that already and reposted, but we'll, we, we've had, yes.
But to clarify...
It should be school years.
Okay, so we are looking at the targets for two years. Well, this, the baseline targets really just shows one year, and I think where we have the aspirational versus realistic for next school year in our communication, I think if it's confusing to us, it will definitely be confusing to, to our schools and to the community. So let's figure out what are our next year and two-year targets, and then what is our aspirational longer-term goal? I think that a way to communicate that would be helpful. Then beyond that, on the smaller points, I agree with a lot of what my colleagues said. The tools and training, I think it's Ms. Keys-Gamara said about an hour ago, I highly agree that we do need to ensure that we are giving our teachers and our staff the training, the tools to properly address discipline, classroom management, the responsive classroom goes a long way, I'm a big fan. How do we move on be, beyond that? I will say over and over again, our middle school, SOS is considering other strategies, that's just one of them I know. I'm very concerned at what we're seeing at the middle schools and elementary schools, and we've done very good work at the high school. So I hope that our action plans will include some strategies that, you know, and yes, we can fail, and we can review it and try again, but to really see what's working in schools, and to expand that for our, our younger students. Same thing with healthy life choices. I know asset building is huge, and we talk about it quite a bit. I appreciate when Ms. Pennarelli shares that with us. I don't see that specifically, I know we have some measurements, but will we be using that in our action plan?
I think some of the feedback that we got, maybe Marty can share a little more, was that, that, that language was a little too complicated for the community. I would be interested in adding the asset language back, we've got a little more specific in the latest version, but that's certainly a point of conversation we can have.
Okay. Yeah, and I know whether we call it, you know, being resilient, you know, wellness and health, sorry, go ahead.
You know, we, we can certainly consider that and definitely build it into those action plans, so...
Okay, and I'm happy to discuss it more. With that, I also agree, I think, Mr. Dr. Presidio, sorry, you mentioned as well, as we talk about, and I know the county plan is birth to age, is their strategic plan is the students being ready to learn, not just academically, but I know on Fairfax, and we've been talking about a long time now, the ability to ensure students have, you know, the wellness, the health, the, the services, the wraparound services they need. And, and a little bit of that is facilities, but I know the large portion of the investment that's needed really is, goes beyond that around programming. I have a half-empty former school building that is in an area with high need of pre-K services, and so it is definitely more the need of the, the programming side, the staffing that is keeping us, I believe, from moving forward. So I know that's an aspiration that I do support, that we work toward. Finally, new teacher training, ways to support our new teachers. I know Westlon had a very successful program, partnering with George Mason, and figuring out how to do that, and supporting, you know, our students moving beyond high school. It looks like Mary Washington just signed an agreement with Nova, their fifth school now, to provide transfers from Nova, and so as we do more and more, they're doing dual enrollment, and I know as we focus on how to support our students beyond high school. And then finally, I just want to say that I, I appreciate, I know it's not 100% flushed out yet, but when we had the conversation and you explained to us how we're starting to move toward that strategic framework, how, I know it's not 100% there, but as we look at what are we doing, I also think it's important that we will first focus on the strategic components, and, and kind of flush it through and get some of the kinks out before going into our operational side. I think that's where there's been a lot of, you know, heartburn palpitations from the public and from us of how, what are, what are we doing to our operations? And so looking at flushing out that, that system and providing tools for our principals. I think we discussed, it shouldn't just be at the board level, but how do we empower our, our school leaders to also learn how to use that framework as we flush it out?
Yes, we're looking at a framework where if, if I were a school principal, I could make decisions about how I would utilize my staffing, whether or not I would go with additional teacher, how I use my resources, and be able to use this same plan, do, study, act model to make those decisions, just as the board would be able to use that same model to make decisions for the system.
Okay, thank you. And finally, I do support what, I hope we have that discussion and how often we want to review this. I think definitely at least yearly, it has to be reviewed, and what went well, where did we fail, and how do we want to move forward? So thank you very much for your time. I know we have Ms. Schultz for a very quick go, go back, and then Ms. Corbett Sanders, and then we'll go to next steps.
So just a couple of things, because I added a couple more go-backs after other people talked. One, the fact that we're still talking about which part is aspirational, which part is target, while I appreciate that people want to put something in the bag and do for the sake of doing, to check a block and move on, I, I do think that that speaks to the fact that we shouldn't, just because we have it on our agenda to vote on, at this board table, we're still trying to flesh out what's an aspirational goal and what's an actual target, and the fact that we hit 75% and should we have the target for next year? These are things that you don't take a vote just because it's scheduled, it's, it's possible that you can actually refine a document and make it better. I will say that the, you know, the strategic document that's on as a redo, that's on our website, you know, has Karen Garza's picture and has board members that are not even on this board, and that's the working draft for 2016, 17, people who are not elected. So it's not, it's not great to, and I'm, I'm the chief author of, like, look, you, the notion that if, if it isn't perfect, we can continue to refine it, but I don't, I don't necessarily think that we ought to press for a vote just because it's already on our schedule. It doesn't mean that we can't give you the high sign that you've asked for, that we're going in the right direction, but there's been tremendous progress on this document and the way things were even framed, and it's not that you got, I think, feedback late, you got feedback exactly when it was scheduled. And so, yes, the staff's been working on it for a long time, but we were at the back end of that work, and we and the public are important components of this. important components of this. Can we go to slide 15? I know everybody's talking about the, the 10% attrition rate. Is that an industry standard? Is employee, I mean, where does that come from? Is that a good industry standard on retention?
So, the industry standard's going to run anywhere between eight and 12 for, in general. In education, it's running on the high end, so 12 to 14%. So, we're exceeding the industry standard in terms of where we're at. We want to continue to push to do better. Ultimately, there is going to be some healthy turnover that occurs, and we need to consider that.
So, again, on the, what has been, the, the knowing where we've been, like, I don't know where we've been necessarily on attrition rates, but that's, that's a crucial component. The question I had specifically on a go-back is the 10% transfer. I, I don't understand the school at all, actually. The, the, the notion that somebody should get into a building and stay there forever, I, I think is antithetical to actually good, good HR practice. And I don't know where this goal comes from. I don't know why it's a good goal, that teachers shouldn't be able to transfer and grow and, and experience different populations in different areas of the county, and what, where does this even come from is, like, you know, like a basic question of mine, and you can answer that, but I'll just get the other two out there. I, I do think Ms. Heinz is correct, and Ms. McLaughlin about the, don't drill down too much, like parental notification. I don't know that we're necessarily looking for that, but what we're saying is, we're missing the employee responsibility side of the student, what expresses a student responsibility. There's two sides to that coin, and so, if we're going to express one side of the coin, you have to express the other, and I don't mean to drill down on that. The, the workload balance issue for our staff, for employees, our teachers, and our students on homework and things like that, is the crucial expression that is missing, that, you know, whether it's homework or load or, or options to take more electives, you know, potentially drive out the PE requirement for athletes who are on a field or in a pool or on a balance beam, you know, 20, 30 hours a week. These do go to the balance of teaching young people how to approach what they're doing with their education and the whole rest of their life. So, I do think that that is important. The other question, I do want you to answer this one, is slide 17, the $1,000 WABE, and this, the second bullet says all schools will have adequate, I don't think we should ever express as, whether it's aspiration or anything, that things be adequate. I, I mean, you know, appropriate, you know, something, and I don't know what that means. Again, is that square feet per student? Because that does get to the renovation issues, the trailers issues, the, you know, wedging, you know, kids in like sardines and right sizing our schools. So, that, that overall space, space, you know, to a student and how we express that is, is crucial here. The $1,000, I, I don't care what any other school district spends, honestly. Being able to compare ourselves to Arlington, that is like a fraction of our size and has a completely different base of population for taxes and, and the ability to draw from that business tax base, they have completely different commercial base than we do. So, I, I don't know that we're, that's the measuring stick I want to use, because we're not spending it per pupil anyway. We spend differently on different populations. And disaggregating by pyramid, Dr. Braybrand, on all of this, by, by student in, in the classroom may not be appropriate, whether it's student growth progression or otherwise, but understanding not what's happening at the division level, but what is happening, you know, at a, a more, a hyper-local level in terms of a pyramid in a building, is important to us. And so, we don't have to, you don't have to drill down to student growth progression to an individual student, or workload, or, or any of this, but we do need to have a better nuanced understanding of what's happening at a pyramid and a, and a building level, because that will say to us where we need to strategically focus going forward. I would appreciate something about the 10%.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Oh, you would appreciate it right now.
So, in terms of the, the transfer rate, ultimately, when there's high turnover within a building, there potentially could be a sign of a concern that needs to be addressed. I think this, this particular measure really gets at looking at perhaps the, the culture and the climate of the building, and, and whether folks are leaving, and being able to peel back the layers in terms of why they may be leaving. Ultimately, you know, we reported back with the Goal 3 report back in February, I believe it was, that we saw about an 8.6% transfer rate amongst our teachers this past year. So, ultimately, we don't want to see folks fleeing buildings for the wrong reason. I get, I agree that there is a, a great deal of, of positivity in folks finding different opportunities and opportunities to grow and, and have different experiences, but at the same time, constant churn within the building also perhaps has a negative impact on the educational program, and we want to measure that.
And then I think that becomes an expression of what that goal really is, because it's a, it's different to say you don't want a transfer rate of more than 10%, what, in a period of time, or at a specific building level, or that indicates, you know, a, a workplace issue. But I, I think actually we should be encouraging, you know, some of this movement and experience and growth for, for professional development reasons for the health of, you know, the, the, the teachers and experiencing something new and the students, you know. Having the goal, because to me, what that says is, anybody who gets into a building should stay into a building 90% of the time. And I don't think that's what it says, but it isn't expressed in such a way, again, to, to do what you're saying, which is, we're trying to ensure that there are target, that, that in the event, it becomes evident that there is a lot of mobility at a, at a particular building or at a particular pyramid level, that we highlight and understand quickly what that issue is, what's causing that mobility, and address that. That's not saying that everybody else should stay where they are.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Corbett Sanders?
I will be very brief. I just want to remind my colleagues that this really is not a new strategic plan. This is a prioritization of a strategic plan that was adopted by the previous board, and that in looking at how we use this, this should be a management tool that says, this is what we're going to focus on for the next two years. And so, I do get a little nervous when we call this our strategic plan, because this actually is almost our capstone to our strategic plan of what we're going to do for the next two years. And so, in looking at where we go next, I want to urge my colleagues to realize that this is really where we're focusing our activities over the next two years. Doesn't mean that we don't need to have more crystallization on, on goals or, or on, on our metrics, but I do want to urge people to, to remember that this is a prioritization and not a brand-new plan. The one thing that I would urge, and I, I apologize for bringing this late to the table, but given the priorities as a nation right now, we probably should have a safety and security priority in this plan that clearly states that our students and our staff will feel state, safe and secure in our buildings and, you know, maybe under resource stewardship and how we set priorities. And that's really all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. I think we will have some of this conversation in our next steps and discussing whether or not we are voting next time. So, if we could go to next steps, and then if there are questions unanswered, I know there are many. Thank you. And I appreciate my colleagues, they're timely. We are only half an hour beyond right now, 25 minutes, so number, could we make it a little bit larger, if that's all right? So, if you could please, it looks like the first few, Ms. Kies-Gamara, I think several are yours. Number one, if that looks all right to you, on slide six. Do we know what the, I'm trying to find what, slide six you do. Is that what you would like to say, Ms. Kies-Gamara?
I, I think that was a comment I made. I'm not sure it needs to be a next step. That looks like one of my notes.
Trying to see.
As we communicate or as we go out in the world that we talk about with that.
Okay. Certainly, I, I did feel that we needed to make sure that our students, our parents understand that we're not just saying that everybody has to graduate and go to college and that sort of thing, but that we have several alternatives. So, if that's what that means, then that's okay.
So, just defining that in our design framework.
We can add that to the board.
Okay. So, would we like to ensure that's added, though, in, in how we are communicating this information publicly?
I certainly would.
Okay, so flush it out a little bit more in the slide?
Yes.
Is that, okay.
Correct.
Yeah, point of clarification, though. I thought, Ms. Kies-Gamara, what you were talking about, and I think it's extremely important, the metrics right now look like for, you know, a standard student.
Yes.
But we don't have metrics for our students with disabilities and others who don't fall.
Well, that, that-
And so, I thought it, the goal was to say to Scott and staff, you may need to add a few more metrics, so it's comprehensive and inclusive of all of our students, and it's not just, you know, a portion of our students. Because some of these metrics would not apply to some of our students.
Well, I think we could add the phrase, comma, including metrics. I do think you're correct, Ms. McLaughlin, in the, in the fact that it was too narrow.
Right, I think it's in some of our success, maybe not necessarily in the metrics. Okay, so should, should we vote on that, number one?
That's fine.
Let's try to get a vote on these guys, okay?
Okay.
Go hands.
It's a lot of extra work. In total, it's going to be a lot of extra work.
So, okay.
Okay, well, the two most important things I said was number one, and number two. I do think, and I mentioned that I would possibly bring a, an amendment with respect to making sure that we are addressing the needs of special, the special education population. I'd like to work with staff on that. Those, to me, were the two most important things that I said.
So, would you like to work with staff on what that will look like?
Yes.
I'm just, I'm just, I, it's hard for me to say, to vote on something, include info. What-
Well, I think we were, I think what we're looking at was not specific with respect to, or didn't, wasn't broad enough to include special education needs and, and their, how we're going to measure and, and metrics and all of the above. It did appear to be too narrow. It is really, number two is an extension of number one.
And we heard from several staff or board members around special education, so let's take a stab at that, and we can look at how we can bring that into the plan, and we can work with board members.
Okay, I appreciate that. But then, is, does, should this say specifically students with disabilities? It says special popu-
Oh, okay, yeah, I meant the special education population.
So, you'll be looking at what we do have, and then maybe what's missing for students with disabilities?
Yes, students with disabilities, yes.
Okay, because I know there's some metrics and some information.
Yeah, I, I think that several of us had that. So, as, as, as long as it's special education, I understand it. Okay.
Right.
Can we take a show of hands on number two, please? Okay, thank you. Number three, slide eight, consider adding metric on special needs students graduating on time, kind of tied in, possibly with number two?
Can I suggest we just slide in with number two? It's comprehensive.
Okay.
It's a comprehensive look at those metrics, and I think Ms. Kies-Gamara is well-equipped to work with the staff on that one.
Okay.
Can you do me a favor, just to put in there then to include graduation? That was one little sub-nugget.
Yeah, we're all okay with that. Quick show, I assume we're all, okay, thank you. The new number three, Ms. Kies-Gamara, alternative to SOL pass rates?
I think this goes more toward, and somebody else made a comment about this, too, is that not only, that not just being the way that we look at it. I think somebody else looked at, mentioned having various ways of defining and not just relying on SOL. So, that may be included in something else.
Okay. Could I ask that, we, I, I'd like to talk to leadership team and then, and come back, because I don't want to get too specific in what we're putting in there.
That's fine.
To ensure that we address what our needs are and not something we're already doing pretty well in.
That's fine, that's fine.
And Teresa, the overall spirit, we're going to take this. We're going to meet tomorrow, and we'll put out our next best thing. It may have all of what you wanted. It may have some of you fallen short, and then you can decide whether it's enough or not based on what we would want to do a, a week from now. But, we want to get, what I want out of this is clarity about what you're looking for. That helps guide our discussion for tomorrow.
Okay.
Even if, even if we can't get it all done by Thursday, or we would still have more work to do.
So, quick show of hands on number three to Ms. Johnson to go back with staff and bring it back to us. Okay, thank you. Number four, slide 11, which is on-
Had to do with disruptive behavior and how we were addressing that. I was looking for more information essentially on how we, what we were talking about and what that included, specifically when we had emphasis on cultural competency and whether that actually addressed the problem we were naming.
Yeah, so my question is, that sounds like part of when they do the action plan, a lot of that. I agree with you. We want to ensure that's included. Is there something in the specific language that you think, so right now it's us, I know it's not, I don't love the language, but it's, staff referrals for disruptive behavior will be similar, well, and Mr. Moon asked us to change that, similar across student groups. So, how we kind of look at discipline and student groups. Is there something on the kind of, the overall, the policy side that we would like to change?
I think it's, I think it is the policy, but I can understand wanting to continue discussions, as long as staff understands what I'm saying. I, I think making a cultural shift is a policy decision. However, I understand wanting to.
And I think as we consider that metric, we were looking at exactly what you were talking about, Ms. Kies-Gamara. So, as we develop what that training looks like, and how we analyze the data and are, are trying to apply different solutions and approaches at different schools, we would be looking at how teachers are, the lens they're using when they're making those disruptive referrals and correcting that.
Right. I, I think it went more to defining it, that the, the way we were describing it in there was, again, too narrow. But I think you get the message, and I'll, I'll just let us move on.
Okay.
Okay.
So, should we take it out?
That's fine with me, as long as-
Okay, and then I know we're going to look at the language with Mr. Moon's, so.
Okay, that's fine.
Is that Dr. Braybrand?
I, I like leaving it for, this just helps me tomorrow, when, when I'm with 25 people going, what did everybody say? And I like this. This helps me with the conversations to make sure. So, I'd like to keep it in if it's possible.
I have no objection to keep it.
Let's do a show of hands on number four. Okay, thank you. Number five, Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Could I make a suggestion?
Yes.
How many do we have?
I don't know.
Eight.
Twenty.
Twenty. Whether, whether we can just look at the languages, whether languages make sense from the proponent, and whether staff understands what the language says and give to superintendent, because superintendent just indicated that he wants to review everything anyway.
So, we won't vote. We want to keep them on, tell what we're saying.
And then he was going to get back to us with what can be done and what cannot be done.
Okay, I like, because I know we have many, many steps right now.
I, I hear you, Mr. Moon. This is taking too long. Could we also just keep an eye out for, and maybe Dr. Braybrand, you could help us with this, as we look at each item, if one of them looks like it's going to be an awful lot of work for staff, I would like at least for the board to have a chance to weigh in and say the majority of us still want you to do it.
Oh, yeah, that, that, that's actually where I kind of want to start to go more and more, is go, look, I'd like to take it all, then be able to come back and be able to go, because some of this puts people on the spot. They're not sure. They've got to go back and check, would it take a lot, would it not? And then if it goes, hey, it's going to take a lot, or it's going to take money, the board can go, you know what?
So, so actually, I have one question, because I, I know we've been talking about this a little bit, like the budget, maybe if there's something that we need before we make a vote? Is that something that?
If I think about the two-by-two process, you all provided a lot of good input, and so we were able to, or put as much in as we could. I think that a lot of the things that we heard today, we can add those items to the plan and then let the board decide. But, but I, a lot of what I heard, I thought, oh, yeah, we could do that, so.
Okay, sounds good.
I think if you give us a chance to take a look at it, we can give information back out to the board, what that first iteration looks like. The, the team back there has been taking notes the entire time, and I'm sure they're already thinking about what it might look like, so.
Ms. Palchik, I was just-
Ms. Palchek, I was just sidebar-ing with the superintendent and he has offered that he could have some preliminary output of that discussion at Wednesday's chairs. And I will make a commitment to have, as part of our chair's memo, an update on this in detail enough so that you all, if you have questions, we can follow up with staff or with myself.
So I guess for timing, by the end of this week, there will be some kind of update, is what it sounds like?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Wonderful. Yes, Ms. Evans?
On number eight, I do think that there were a couple of specific-
Do you mind if we need to get there? Is that okay?
Oh, okay, you're going to still go one by one?
I think we're just going to check the language quickly.
Oh, we are?
Is that what we're saying or no? Yes. Okay, so number five, is that okay with you, Ms. Corbett Sanders?
I'm fine with that.
Okay, number six, Ms. Schultz, and seven, eight, Ms. Evans?
Yes, I would like to have the two specific ones that I mentioned there in particular. One was the hiring by July one and the other was the number of schools with chronic absenteeism, the reduction in the, in the number with chronic absenteeism. Those are the two in particular I wanted to revisit it.
Okay, number nine, Ms. Schultz, Ms. Evans? Good, okay, number 10, Ms. Strauss?
I think you probably take it off. I mean, it clearly was on a yearly basis.
Number 10, Mr. Darrenat Kofax? Fine. Q11, Ms. McLaughlin, and 12? So this is, I guess, more of a vote, a board question, so we need to, so let's come back to that. Okay, number 13, Mr. Moon? 14, Ms. Meekler. Yeah, so this is where I don't know what's, you can figure out what's best, that's good. Number 15, Mr. Moon? 16, Ms. Schultz?
No, I would say that they need to consider language which better details the teacher transfer rate and concern. The why, you know, I don't know, I don't know how to-
Yeah, language that better, the intent of the metric for why we would be studying teacher transfer rate. I totally got that conversation. I know what you want. It's really our, it's our early indicator to see if there's issues going on at a school.
That fall above the average or outside the average?
Right. We'll, we'll go back and retweak it. I know, I know exactly what you're looking for.
And geographically, because I've heard from principals in certain areas say really, really high needs, sometimes stressful teachers.
Well, I mean, I think, and maybe even broader, as we rethink about it as a staff, it may be strong principal, strong culture, and there's still a pull away from the school because of these other factors. And we need to be able to bring those to the board and come up with a plan to address it.
This is my risk factor conversation I've had with you and with you about the other school system, about evaluating. It's not just the number, because the number alone doesn't, isn't the indicator. It's the understanding of what's behind the number.
The number helps us go, oh, there might be something there. And then we have to analyze as we look at it more closely.
Thank you. Ms. Schultz, you have 17 and 18?
I think I said to replace with appropriate. To place the word with appropriate, quote unquote, and to quantify the measure, yep. I think you need to put quotes around appropriate. And for 18, I would say, consider other measures of success than cost per pupil of surrounding jurisdictions.
Number 19, Ms. Corbett Sanders? Okay, should we go back to number 12? And Ms. Corbett, okay, quick, yes, Mr. McAlvin?
Just, I want to clarify with the superintendent, because he said he's using this as a guide for discussion. A lot of us said things that weren't captured in this, so I just want to make sure that staff has noted those things, correct?
Yes, I haven't looked at everyone's notes yet, but we'll, we'll have next steps and folks' notes from that. If there's something on there, Ryan, that you're thinking is really-
We have multiple note-takers in the room who have been covering, so.
Ms. Strauss?
With regard to number 12, I think as a board, we've, we have to give some indication of whether or not we're on the right path. Strategic plans are living documents. They should be unless they're not, they're not useful. And I think Ms. Corbett Sanders said it well, that this is not a redo of the entire plan. It is a strategic focus and, yes, there's, there is more work to be done. There's, there are metrics that are not in here yet. But I think we need to come up with an agreement as to whether or not we're on the right track. Otherwise, staff continues to spin their wheels and the staff will be working with, coming forward with reports based on, on a lot of our questions and, and targets and metrics and all the rest of that. So I hope we are comfortable in getting to some way of giving the superintendent's staff useful feedback so that the reporting back to us is useful and is actually driving us to where we want to go with our youngsters.
Thank you, Ms. Strauss. I do have a couple more. Are there others who want to speak on 12? We're coming. I just want to let people know that I'm taking anyone, any other comments. So have, okay. Just raise your hand, let Ms. Heinz know, okay. So I have so far, Ms. McLaughlin, then Mr. Moon, and there are others, thank you.
So I appreciate what Ms. Strauss is trying to say in support of what Ms. Corbett Sanders is saying, but both of you actually articulated exactly what I was saying and what our superintendent said. He wanted our feedback. We all had our two-by-twos. And staff got to spend months on this. And we all had our one-hour two-by-twos. And then we're now spending two hours with 12 people trying to say, "Do you want to put your hand in the air and say that this is ready to go for primetime?" If it's instead that we've only had this one work session to discuss the prioritization of the strategic plan, then what I asked in the beginning is, what is the rush to postpone this until we reconvene in September and make sure that all the blanks are filled in and they're ready to go? Nothing's stopping the superintendent from taking our feedback, as he's mentioned. And Ms. Strauss said how important it is that he has our feedback. He gets that. But I'm cautioning, if you put your hand in the air a week from Thursday, so about 10 days from now, that is on us to say, we think this, this, as it's called, the strategic plan focus for school years 2018 to 2020, that we're ready to go, show this to the community and say, here you go. I don't think it's ready yet. It'll probably be ready in September. Why don't you have it look appropriate the way the superintendent, I think, wants it to look polished and ready for the public? He can speak to all of this with the leadership, you know, event in August. But this isn't a postponing it forever and ever, you guys. But the fact of the matter is, we took a portion of our strategic plan and we're refining it. But meanwhile, the existing strategic plan ignite, as Ms. Schultz pointed out, still has Karen Garz's name on it, Karen Garz's picture on it, retired board members' names on it. And the public doesn't know there's a difference between this focused plan and our actual ignite. So I just really hope people understand there's no harm in putting this off until September. And I think there's a big value add and a benefit for us as a board to put forward our, our best vote and the system to put forward its best prioritized plan.
Thank you. I have Mr. Moon, Ms. Evans, Ms. Kiesgumara, and Ms. Darrenat Kofax.
Okay, I think, you know, earlier I said that I wanted to see how, you know, superintendent would be able to take all this feedback from us and maybe refine, you know, fine-tune what he has proposed to us earlier and go from there. I think I was, I was looking at the agenda item for the last board meeting and this is scheduled to be voted. It was, it was listed as a new business and scheduled to be voted at the next meeting, July 26. That, you know, my, my position on this at this point in time is keep it as is on the agenda. And if superintendent feels that he's not quite ready, he can always ask, you know, children by shelter pull-in or postpone it to some other time. Or even if the superintendent feels that he is ready, I think this is, you know, a good plan to be presented to the public, to be voted on. We can still disagree at that time, at the next board meeting, at the next board meeting. If the board, by majority vote, says that, let's give ourselves a little more time towards September or some other time, we can still do that. But I want to see what the superintendent is going to bring back to us with these comments. There are other comments we made, which are not quite listed yet, but you all took copies now. So I wanted to see that. That's, if we can do that, we don't have to decide whether we're going to vote at the next meeting or not today. We can actually see what it comes back with and then go from there.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Moon. Ms. Evans?
So I wanted to get clarity first on what exactly we would be voting on. And I'm going back to, as Mr. Moon did, to, are we being asked on this next time to be voting basically on slide four and five? Or are we being, if you want to go to slide four and five of the presentation, which is the overarching, and then the eight, the eight specific goals? Or are we, that, and then the next one has the eight specific goals? Or are we being asked to approve this as well as all of the, the targets? Which is it?
Well, overall, it'd be great to have the whole thing. If the board ended up wanting to just do the, what we call the one-pager front and back, we could. I mean, my, my druthers is to have the overall support from the board, that the community says this board believes this should be the focus over our next two years. That's my ideal situation, to be honest with you.
So I'm looking at the, at this, these two pages. And I'm certainly prepared at this point to take a vote on these two. I think where we have a lot of questions is in some of the details and some of the targets. So as a possible, I'm just throwing this out here, we could vote to give you what you need for the leadership, to say, these are our goals for this coming year. If that would give you what you needed and if board members felt we needed more time to get some of the specific targets put together, that's a possibility.
And my most honest answer is, I want more time tomorrow to get with my staff. We have one more work session, maybe, I'm not there, but Marty will be. I mean, I know, but we could sit, maybe have a little time. We've done some work, made some tweaks that get people closer to feeling like they could vote. If they were ready to vote on the whole document next, whenever the date is, in the end of July, that would be wonderful. If there's feelings, there's, there's not enough that's been done or we don't have enough time, that we can maybe just sort of pull apart and do the overarching piece, sort of the one-pager that we want to get out what our increased focus is and leave a few of the other details still to be determined. But I'd love to have just a little more time to meet with my staff tomorrow, really go through how much we can get done. We got a lot done in just three weeks after we did two-by-twos with you guys from, remember what those of you who said, like, the cartoons, we had cartoons, we had metrics. We've changed a lot. I think we can still get some more done. And we do have one more work session, which is already full, but we could move some stuff around and give folks one final bite of the apple for that Thursday school board meeting. That's still one track I want to leave open before we look at maybe other ways to-
Okay, so my advocacy on this, if you're keeping track, Ms. Palchek?
Yes, I am.
Is that we, we do keep it on the agenda to vote on and that we, we decide today that we will at least vote on, on these two pages. I'm kind of of two minds about the rest, you know, if we're quite there yet. So if, if other board members felt that we needed to postpone that piece of it until September, I wouldn't object to that. But I do think that we should, at the very least, Dr. Braybrand has said he needs this to direct staff. So I do think we should keep it on and at least do this.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Ms. Kiesgumara, and then Ms. Darrenat Kofax, and Ms. Heinz?
I don't like holding up the show. I will say, with response to Ms. Evans's comments regarding these two pages, part of my comment with respect to goal number two was the use of the word, "cultural responsiveness," and whether that was inclusive enough. And so I will have to say that, as far as my concerns that I've expressed, I think, in those four bullets, is that even this probably needs a little bit of tweaking. I feel like we're very much in process. What I'm willing to say is that I believe we're on the right track, if that's, if that's the kind of language that's helpful to the superintendent. But ultimately, I think my responsibility, and I'll speak for myself, as a board member, is to, to be that voice of, you know, the community who can't sit at this table and express the concerns that I believe we've been discussing today. And so I feel, for that reason, I believe we have an obligation to finish the work. I very much want to hear the result of the meeting tomorrow and how these things can be added. But I also am cautious about trudging ahead without fully flushing out that process. So what I can commit to say today is that I believe we're on the right process, right track. And I look forward to seeing what else we have. Without seeing that, I really can't commit to voting really on anything other than saying that we're on the right track.
Okay, thank you. Tammy?
Dr. Braybrand said he needs more time with his staff tomorrow and I think the best option is for us to wait until what he says, they have an analysis in that meeting, and then move forward. If you want to, I think we're talking now about going ahead with the two-page, the one-pager. It's really a two-pager, is talking about doing that and putting that forward and then having an opportunity to come back in September over some of the broader objectives. So I, I think I'm of that mind. I think a couple people have said that. I don't know, Ms. McLaughlin, if that's something that you think. The two-pager, which gives Dr. Braybrand the freedom to move forward with his leadership team and with, you know, what's happening in August, all the things that are happening in August, and then the details of the plan itself. And I think that, for me, I would be okay with that because it kind of speaks to what I spoke to earlier. The, the, the constants, it's a living document. The strategic plan is a living document. You do want final approval at some point for what's going to transpire in, in, in the timeframe delineated in this part of the strategic plan. So we need that board approval, but I think we can do it two different ways. And just so everybody's clear, is vote on the two-pager as scheduled. Vote on if, if he's not able, which I doubt, given these 20 pages and giving our schedule and giving, we're supposed to have a few days recess. It's down to days now in August. You know, making certain that then we, and when we reconvene in September, kind of look at it and then give the final check. That would be my advocacy.
Thank you. And before we move on, so to clarify, Ms. Kiesgumara, are you also comfortable with moving forward with the two-pager? I think I'm still a little unclear.
I may have been unclear. In my understanding, I thought we were saying we could vote on the two-pager now, which I'm not ready to do because I think, I think we still have some work to do. With respect to leaving the two-pagers on for the meeting, I'm okay with that, with the caveat that, of the comment that I just made with respect to caring, cultural responsiveness.
Okay, and you will work with staff as well on that, I believe? Okay, thank you. Mr. McAlvin?
I mean, I don't think we've resolved a critical question here, which is whether it's aspirational or realistic. Because as it stands, I cannot vote on it if this is supposed to be aspirational. And I don't, unless that question is answered in two weeks, or in a, what, a week and a half, 10 days, I don't foresee us being able to move forward with it. If staff can tell us that it's aspirational and change things so that they are in fact aspirational, I can vote for it.
So is that something you would like to see the superintendent bring back? Okay.
The global question that I asked was if the superintendent had gathered all of our feedback, which he said that he had. So I don't think it needs to be a next step, or else we're going to be here for another two hours defining next step.
Okay, but so for today, you're saying you're not comfortable voting, or you are comfortable? I'm trying to decide, people who are comfortable to vote on Thursday, depending on what we hear back?
I am not comfortable to vote on what we saw today.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Sorry, Ms. Heinz, is that it? Okay. All right, you know, I do think that the next steps should, at minimum, get answers for people that they need before they would vote. So if that's really important to you, then that needs to come back, I think, from the superintendent, that's my own...
I think it was captured, Mr. Moon's next step.
All right. So I would just say that, you know, I do think we as a board own this document, you know, and so we have some responsibility here to raise our hands in partnership with the superintendent at this point. A lot of work has gone into making this better, making it strategic, making it a living, you know, bringing it alive, and so I think we need to do something, right? So I think we should definitely leave it on the agenda for next week at this point. I don't think we should pull anything off the agenda at this point. I also think, you know, I agree that we should leave it up to the superintendent, come back to us, and I, what I want to think about is the message that we send to the community and particularly, you know, the school system. July to September may only be two months, but it is a huge time in the life of a school system. So I think we have to do something in July, I really do. I think we have to partner with the superintendent on this in July and say, we at least agree with some basic message about which way we're going. So I, I guess that's where I am, is just if we're voting on whether to leave it on the agenda and then figure out what that agenda item is between now and then, then I support that.
Thank you, Ms. Heinz. And I do, I want to clarify for the public and for us as well, that when we speak about this two-pager, it is the document titled, The Strategic Plan One-Pager. It's currently called a one-pager, which is the Portrait of a Graduate, kind of graphic on page one, and then the breaking out of the what and the how and the success, what it looks like. So it's really the, you know, the easy to understand, easier to understand document. So I think we're ready to kind of maybe, I'm seeing at least six people supporting for now, keeping this on the agenda for July 26, waiting for staff and chairs to come back to us with an update, and then perhaps amendments, and perhaps seeing what exactly we will vote on for July 26. So Madam Chair, I kind of would like to hear from you, what you're hearing, what you would like to hear from us before moving forward, if that's all right?
I'm comfortable with the approach you just laid out, and I'm making a commitment to you that we will get you something to the whole board on Wednesday. It may be late on Wednesday, but you will get an update as to feedback from the LT discussions that Dr. Braybrand has, and then the discussions that we have in chairs, to make sure that you, that they've, we've got a path forward for you, for the whole board, and I'm hearing that there is more comfort in this one-pager than the full plan, but that will really depend on what happens with Dr. Braybrand's leadership team tomorrow. So I think we're all in alignment on it.
Okay.
Ms. Palchek, process point, what's the next page to this? Because what Ms. Evans kept pointing to is not what the one-pager is that I've got. The one-pager I've got is what you're holding up. That's got metrics and targets that, that a lot of us have said are unclear. If, if I went with what Ms. Evans just said, that is what she was pointing to.
Yes, that's what I was pointing to.
And that's the one we're all saying...
The previous one.
...we get behind, not this one with the details, so...
Because that has, that, that has the target on it, and this...
Has all the targets and metrics.
I was only talking about those two slides.
What we want to accomplish is this, and that's the part that we were saying we could get behind.
My honest best thinking, let us do the work from your feedback today, tomorrow, and the rest of the week. If you can only do one page, you only do one page and vote. If you can do two pages, that's great, too. If you can do the whole kit and kaputol, it's great. I do see benefit from sending a message to the system and to the community, clarity and conciseness of where we're going. But I understand, you want to see your issues addressed. I can't do that in the middle of this in a way that I don't think puts people awkwardly on point to know what can be done, what can be changed, and we need to have some of our own thinking conversations, but based on what you said, that we need to take the benefit of and go back. We did that in the two-by-twos, I think we can do it from this conversation today.
I agree, but from a process standpoint...
Let me just finish, I think we can get it done.
But Dr. Braybrand, it's just, I'm actually talking process. This is what some of us were saying we could get behind.
Right, you can get behind the one-pager, not both, both pages.
But this is different from what we're calling, and we posted as a one-pager, so I just want to make sure you and your team know, there's this one-pager that Ms. Palchek was talking about, and then there's this one-pager that you didn't really mean for a one-pager, but we're saying would be a great one-pager. Do you know what I'm saying? Like, this is the one-pager that some of us, so I just want to make sure when you get together, that's one option. This is an option, and then the really big thing is the third option.
I would like to refer to this document as the aspirational document. This is the aspirational document that we're using, and then the other targeted document, which shows the breakdowns with Benchmark, and then next year, those are the measures and targets that we would be focusing on for the upcoming school year. So this is the overall aspirational document that we developed as a staff. What Ms. Evans shared, those are simply, if we look at this slide, this is the front page of our aspirational document, and if you look at the next slide, that's merely, those are the desired outcomes that you all voted on and have approved to this point. Yes?
I'm sorry, I was just, I don't, I honestly don't understand where we are right now. I don't understand what you're trying to put on the agenda, we're going to vote on something in 10 days, you want extra time with your staff to do something, I don't know what, and then when is it that we're going to figure out as a board what that agenda item is going to be so that we could even vote on it? We don't have any more time together.
There is another work session prior to the school board meeting, so I just beg you guys, let me go back with our staff and take your feedback and try to make it clear, and then you guys can decide up or down, vote, don't vote, or do something else. But it's impossible to have the board feedback and discussion, and then at the same time simultaneously engage staff and do it within a short block of time.
So I think, at this moment, what we're trying to get is a sense of the board that we want to leave this on our agenda for next Thursday's regular meeting, and that we may well change or amend what exactly we're voting on next Thursday when we hear back from the superintendent.
That's correct.
And if we have support for that, I think we should end this work session.
Yes, good, all right. So I think we're, overall, I heard support, so thank you, thank you all. We, it is 2 o'clock, 2:30, we'll reconvene, we're one hour behind. Thank you.